I just dumped all the cards.
Okay, board members, we'll go ahead and start our meeting. And good morning and welcome. It is November 22nd. It is, this is the Ventura County Board of Supervisors' regular meeting. Please turn off your cell phones, even though we love the music. And if we could start with a roll call, please.
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Here.
Supervisor Michaels?
Here.
Supervisor Flynn?
Here.
And Supervisor Long?
Here, thank you. And again, welcome to your boardroom. I'd like to, if we might take a moment, stand in a moment of affirmation and then we'll have our pledge. And during this Thanksgiving season, this Thanksgiving week, I'd like us all to take a moment in deep appreciation and thanks to our outstanding firefighters of our county and all of those from other counties who responded to assist us in this last week. In deep appreciation for their professional skills, for their courage, and for the outstanding job they did for all of us in this county. Thank you. Supervisor Bennett, would you lead us in the pledge?
Hand over heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moved. There's a motion of second to accept the minutes of Tuesday, November 15th. An objection to that motion? Hearing none, so ordered. At this time, good morning, Mr. CEO. We have agenda review.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, we have a couple of items here. Item number 28, there's a request to continue that to December 13th in order to coordinate with the City of Oxnard. Item number 30, circumstances have changed since the board letter was prepared and I believe the auditor controller on that item is dealt with has a comment that she'd like to read into the record for clarification. And item 33 does not require a four fifths vote as listed on the agenda. Three fifths is adequate.
Okay. Okay, any other comments on agenda review? Moved to consider?
Second.
And objections? Hearing none, so ordered. Consent agenda items 10 through 21.
Move approval. I would ask that we pull item 16.
For discussion? Okay.
Move the remainder of the consent agenda.
Motion of second, items 10 through 21, pulling 16 for discussion. No objection, so ordered. All right, Supervisor Parks? Item 16.
We did have a comment in our packet regarding particularly one of these items in the Watershed Protection District, the La Haas.
Las Yahas.
There you go. Las Yahas. There's a, the original price was a little over 2 million, now it's a little over 4 million. And I was wondering if we can get a report on what's causing that.
Certainly.
Okay, so the request is to staff to get a report. You want that now or just at some?
I can, I would like if we have the information now or... Okay, then, well, we can wait till later in the meeting.
All right, we can trail it. We'll trail the item.
We'll trail the item, Ron. Thank you.
Okay. Make a note here. All right, then at this time, we will move to our public comment time. And I've been asked, and certainly I would hope the board would agree, that we have some visitors this morning who are youth and very engaged in our community, and they would like to speak to the board on item 29, but cannot stick around all morning for that item. So I've agreed to certainly have them come and speak before the board. And I believe the same request was made by Dr. Joan Blatchard. Joan, would you like to, is that the same request, to speak now? Okay, please come forward.
Chairman.
Good morning.
Long, Chairman Woman Long and supervisors, I'm Dr. Joan Blatchard and I'm a member of the Mental Health Board. I'm here to tell you that I strongly support, endorse the Behavioral Health Department's three-year Mental Health Services Act plan that you were going to be voting on later today. I would also like to commend the Behavioral Health Director Linda Shulman and Susan Kelly, who's sitting back there, the Mental Health Board, and all of the mental health stakeholders who worked so diligently and collaboratively over many, many months to develop the plan. Its implementation will greatly enhance services for the seriously mentally ill. And I would also like to take this opportunity to thank you, the Board of Supervisors, for your ongoing support for the seriously mentally ill in Ventura County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Blatchard, for your support and work on that also. We appreciate it. Luis Munoz, please come forward.
And good morning. Good morning. My name is Luis Munoz and I'm here on behalf of the Fillmore Mental Health Committee. Teens and adults in Fillmore, there are currently a lot of teens and adults in Fillmore that have mental problems, many drug addicts and alcoholics and homeless. And many of these people do not know where to go and search for help. In Fillmore, when you walk through Fillmore, you don't see any posters telling people, you need help, psychological help, call this number or go here. In my family, in my family, they have, I have cousins that are drug addicts and who have not received mental help because they don't know where to go to get help. My own sister had an eating disorder and we did not know what to do. We didn't know, we didn't know who to call and to pay for treatment is too expensive. We need services in our community to help our people. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Danielle Gonzalez? Daniel Gonzalez, let's make that correct, sir. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. My name is Danielle Gonzalez and I'm here to tell you about what, as a committee, what we're doing. We're trying to find out what services we actually have in Fillmore, Peru, Barstow, and Rancho Suez. And we're trying to talk to other adults in our community and youths, mainly in churches and just trying to figure out what exactly we need and what exactly we have.
Thank you. Omero Martinez? Did I pronounce that right? If not, I apologize. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Omero Martinez, Representative Fillmore. Untreated mental health problems are often seen through violence in the community. Just recently, these last couple of months in Fillmore, we've been having maybe a drive-by shooting once a week. Many, many of the kids who are doing these drive-bys are on some type of drug or alcohol or are influenced by other kids to do these things. We are currently seeking a facility, looking for a facility or a place to have where kids could come in and get, if they're, you know, if they need help, they could come in, a safe place, safe environment, and they need someone to talk to, we're there for them. We have a staff that comes to our school maybe once or twice a week, but that's during the day. And, you know, what about the evenings? You know, some places where these kids can call and, like I said, stop by and deal with the peer pressure that's going on with these kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Angelina Camarena? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Angelica Camarena and I'm from Fillmore. And in Fillmore, many people in Fillmore do not take advantage of the mental health services due to language or cultural differences. As a community, we think that we need counselors that speak Spanish and understand the culture. And I think we should have more posters that actually give us information in Spanish and telling them that we do have services of mental health where they can get help and just take advantage of the services. Thank you.
Thank you. Arisalee Avalos?
Good morning.
Good morning.
A high percentage of the community is on welfare and has many problems, but due to transportation problems, cannot get to Ventura, Oxnard, Tuxedo or Simi Valley for help. People in our community not all have transportation to get the help they are seeking for. So what we are asking for is either transportation to the services, or we would rather have services in our community. In conclusion, I ask that you please pass the recommendations for the Mental Health Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Varenzi Magana? Did I pronounce that?
Good morning. My name's Varenzi Magana.
Thank you.
And the Mental Health Act asks for a system transformation of mental health services. Since we have virtually had no services, this is a chance for Ventura County not to do more of the same or to replace lost services, but to truly look at minority and underserved population, services that they need and how to access present services. So please pass the Mental Health Recommendation Committee so that we can keep helping our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well said. Cecilia Magana?
Good morning. My name is Cecilia Magana and I am from Fillmore. Some services that our committee have been thinking about is to have a drop-in center where teens can go hang out, relax and talk to someone about their problems, and to have thematic groups like on topics such as anger management, violence in families, stopping drug and alcohol use, depression, peer relations, post-traumatic shock, grief, and possible parallel parent groups, like to help them deal with the problems that they have, not only at school but at home. only at school but at home. And to have a place, like if they ever feel like running away from home, to have a place to stay for a day or so, you know, to relax, think about what they're doing and stuff and pretty much a place for them to go. So I would like to ask if you could please pass the Mental Health Proposal. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Lynn Edmonds?
My name is Lynn Edmonds and I'm fortunate to be able to work with these youth and many others in the community of Fillmore and Piru, which also includes Rancho Sespe. I addressed you a week or two ago and explained that I also have worked in Moore Park. I'm a retired educator. And it's amazing to me, the view that people have in this valley. When you're in Fillmore, you look with your back to the mountains, out at the whole community. You see Thousand Oaks over the hill and Camarillo and Oxnard and Ventura. You can't get there, but you see them as a whole. When you're in Moore Park, your back is to Fillmore. The only people that know of Fillmore, Piru, that live in that area are people who've been here for generations. Most people look towards the ocean and look towards the other cities. And that also is reflected in the Mental Health Initiative. I was there when people were working, they worked very hard. They looked at all the services available and what needed to be done. When they did, however, if you look at the budget, you'll see that of the $6 million, less than $50,000 is aimed for Fillmore, Piru. It's a tiny, tiny amount. So as we as a committee are looking for services, what we need to have in our community, how we as a community who have homeless, who have children and adults with critical needs, mental health needs, who somehow we keep it secret within ourselves and try to deal with it until it hits the news, until someone comes in and there's a stabbing at Ventura College and all of a sudden Fillmore's in the news. We want to prevent those things. We want to look at ways that we can help students and adults and parents get the help they can before it breaks out, before we have a youth that jump off a bridge and commit suicide, which just happened last month. So we ask that you take serious consideration and pass. We fully support the initiative that was put forward, but as we're moving forward with this, we also ask that you look very seriously at the outreach and engagement recommendations that will be coming out of thoughtful youth and thoughtful adults. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for being here and for bringing our wonderful youth to speak to us. We appreciate your comments and for you being here this morning. Thank you so much for your advocacy. Armando Vasquez?
Good morning. Curious, about thirty-five years ago, I got my start at Fillmore Unified School District at Sespe Elementary School as an elementary school teacher. It brings back a lot of memories because I was almost a gang kid. I had great parents. I ran around with some tough kids. And if it weren't for a whole lot of luck and a lot of love from people, I wouldn't have been permitted to get into North Ridge and eventually obtain a master's degree and work in the communities that I've worked in. Yeah, Fillmore's neglected. It's always been neglected. I want to talk to you today about something that occurred yesterday under your watch. Judge Bish yesterday in Courtroom Forty-One recused himself from further participation in the gang court hearing. Your district attorney's office has, at every level, proceeded to stymie, to buttress, to otherwise stop any effort by the community to develop an opt-out process for the gang people, for the gang kids. It has been doing so conscientiously, expertly, and in a way that there is absolutely no way for these gang kids to fairly, honestly, get out of being enjoined once they are served with papers. It's wholly un-American, ladies and gentlemen, to be served, enjoined, and then for the rest of your life, effectively, be controlled by the policing forces of this community. The district attorney, with all its incredible resources that you control, has made it very, very clear that they want to hear nothing about an opt-out process. Now, they will disingenuously tell you that there is an opt-out process. You go back at the court proceedings and you will read Judge Bish's language and he will effectively counter that statement. It is not an opt-out process. Many organizations, LULAC, COR, La Mesa, and other organizations have invited every official that we can think of to sit down with us. Everybody. Remington has sat down with us. Crombach has sat down with us. Supervisor Flynn has sat down with us. Every responsible person in the community has sat down with us to listen at least to the idea of an opt-out process. The only people that will not come to the table are the district attorney's people. And they have over and over and over and over again stated that they will not negotiate. Well, this is not a war, or it may be their war, but these are our young people that we're talking about. So I'm going to throw something out, ladies and gentlemen, because I'm best, I think, when I'm at people. And there is this notion, I believe in my mind, I've been trying to work with it, and I'm going to call it baby boomer racism. And it's, you got yours, ladies and gentlemen, and somewhere along the way, we professionals forgot that our young people need what we had, that is, a lending hand, a loving hand, a fair shake, and not pompous grandstanding behind legal fine-tuning of things that really don't serve our community well. And so I deplore you to sit down with Taunton and ask him point-blank, where is the opt-out process that Judge Bish so expertly, so diligently, so objectively, so judiciously maneuvered and tried to craft, and you folks were never at the table? We are now going to go as a grassroots committee, COR, LULAC, and everybody else on the attack until we get some type of a meeting with District Attorney Taunton, possibly with Judge Bish, and any other officials that really, truly want to craft out a opt-out process for these people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Michael Kootnik?
Difficult to follow up on such a passionate appeal. However, I'd like to bring to notice yesterday in The Star, and this is great headline, Supervisors Moving Ahead in Channel Islands Harbor. Now, that's good news. I address Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Johnson. I'd just like to read two paragraphs out of here if I could. As Channel Islands Harbor Commissioner, I would like to respond to some of the letters regarding the harbor and its stewardship by the current director and staff. This is a phenomenal amount of disinformation that is being constantly repeated. I go to the second-to-last paragraph and it states, "Everyone agrees that things should be moving faster at the harbor. The reality is that there is a very limited staff that handles a complex array of real estate issues. Unfortunately, much of the time of the director and professional staff is consumed by continued fighting over the location of the Boating Instruction and Safety Center and local resistance to the reasonable development of the harbor for the benefit of all citizens of the county." I have a letter that is addressed to the Chair, Supervisor Long, that she'll receive in the mail tomorrow, but I thought I'd bring a copy and read it this morning. This is from the Friends of Channel Islands Harbor. Dear Supervisor Long, On behalf of the Friends of Channel Islands Harbor Association and each individual master lessee in the harbor, I want to thank you, Supervisor Bennett, Supervisor Michaels, and Supervisor Parks for making some hard decisions as of this date. Your collective sense of probity and principled actions are held in high esteem by all lessees. We also stand shoulder to shoulder with you and complete support of Lynn Krieger and her staff. With the majority of the board's support and the diligence of staff, we have accomplished more in the past eighteen months than we have in the past eighteen years. And speaking as a long-term lessee, I've seen many changings of the guard in Ventura County. We all know that in the public sector as well as in the private sector, the things get accomplished with the right people, at the right place, and at the right time. The steadfast leadership that Johnny Johnson gives us is unparalleled heretofore in Ventura County. There are more worthy battles to be fought and won. Doing that which is right, correct, and moral takes grit and forthrightness. We again thank all of you for being the right people at the right place, and this is the right time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes the public comment portion of our agenda. Having no further cards, again, thank you for being here this morning. Thank you, Lynn. And at this time, shall we do sixteen, Supervisor Parks? Is the information available? Are we going to? Go ahead. Mr. Johnson?
I was going to say, the Public Works Director said that they would like, if possible, to take that up with item, I think it's thirty-seven, because that's an item where the flood control people will be here at the same time and they can cover both.
Okay. So somebody remind me if I-
I will.
-skip right over. All right, then we'll go at this time to Board Comments. Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. I would just like to ask that the board close in honor of the people on this list and really did appreciate the folks from Fillmore and the mentor, really, that came forward both at our hearing before the Mental Health Board and then again today. It's nice to be able to know that we will provide services. We're never going to have enough, it seems, but it's good that we will be able to provide services specifically in that community. And I look forward to today's hearing on that.
Thank you. Supervisor Flynn?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to introduce Dr. Glenn Schmidt. Glenn Schmidt was a board member starting in, I think, seventy-four, nineteen-
Seventy-one.
I'm sorry. You look so young out there. Seventy-one, nineteen seventy-one, and he was just an outstanding board member. Not always did staff like what he said, I think, but he was just outstanding. And he and I became rather close friends. And I came onto the board as quite a left-winger and Glenn Schmidt came on more to the right, but we managed to move together into the middle and it was just a great thing, time working with him. I remember the Camrio Airport was the big controversy in those days and, as it turned out, the Camrio Airport is now pretty much working the way the community would like it to work. It doesn't accept large jets and so forth. But I remember that headline that happened in the paper, I forget, sometime in the early seventies. Flynn and Schmidt fly united to San Francisco to speak against the opening of the Camrio Airport. And I think it was the work of Mary Gale, who was the legal person for the VCTC, and Stan Daley, the former mayor of the city of Camrio, and all of us working together managed to move that airport where it should be, and that's what it is today. And Glenn was, Schmidt was a great leader there. Anyway, welcome to the board. We're very proud of the service you gave to the county of Ventura, Glenn. And let me just speak for a moment about the injunction. There's an injunction area in the city of Oxnard, as you know, that takes in a fairly great portion of the city. And it's an area where so-called gang members live, and it's an area that is under the injunction and maybe a hundred and fifty young people have been served the injunction notice. And we've been working, I've been working with Armando Vasquez, as you heard him this morning. And one of the things that we really need to do, and Jorge Vasquez, can you start up, please, Jorge? Thank you very much. He was involved in the program and he, Jorge, came to my office and worked in the office for a time. And I can remember, at first, he was not smiling and not communicating very much, but that's all turned around. And what we can do with young people, and Jorge, let me just say more about him. He is a scholar. He's a scholarly type of human being, very intelligent, and will go a long way in this world. But the people that are in gangs, and I'm not saying Jorge was in one, but the people in gangs today do need a lot of help. They need a lot of help, just like Armando identified. And it's like a vineyard, you know? We're in a vineyard, if we want to refer to one of St. Paul's letters. We're in a vineyard here, and everyone in the vineyard, all of Ventura County and all the world is a huge vineyard. But here in Ventura County, the vineyard says that we all have to help one another. And that's the purpose of the vineyard. We're all inside the vineyard to lend assistance. By that I mean love, and I mean the same things that Armando expressed this morning. We've been going to the homes of people who've been served the injunction. It's not a matter of non-public record, it is a public record. We've been going and visiting those homes and in many cases, the families need a lot of help. Let me just give you an example of one young girl, young lady, who was associated with a gang and she suffered a drive-by shooting, I think I mentioned this before, and her stomach was riddled with bullets. She was taken to St. John's Hospital and managed to survive. And then two years later, I met her, she was still having difficulty holding food down, and I took her to the county hospital, VCMC, and she had other issues and we took her. Finally, she entered Victory Outreach and committed herself for a year to that program. So people can turn around, but we need to lend a hand in doing that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett?
Good morning and thank you very much. I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. As everybody is aware also, there was a fire between Ventura and Ojai this past weekend. I was able to attend the briefing on both Friday night at six o'clock and Saturday morning at six o'clock where there were hundreds of firefighters there. And I, just for the benefit of the board, want to emphasize how impressed I was with the whole organization and coordination that was going on. Hundreds, probably three to four hundred firefighters there for an hour briefing. You could hear a pin drop, one person talking without a microphone, and everybody right there, alert and attentive, coming up with a game plan to try to be able to move that. And so I see our fire chief here in the back, Chief Roper, and I just want to personally compliment him. He's the person in the background and you don't see him taking the lead in those things, but it's really clear just how much he's been able to create an organization that can handle itself so calm and professionally in that setting. It was really an impressive event and I also got to see his tremendous ability to use those relationships that he has cultivated with. City of Ventura Fire, with California Department of Forestry was down, lots of state officials were there, and we are really fortunate to have such a well-coordinated operation here that we could get that many resources in front of, between the fire and the homes in the city of Ventura that quickly and work that seamlessly together. And so I just want to genuinely compliment the chief- And so, I just want to genuinely compliment the chief and hope that he'll pass those thanks on to everybody else in all of the affected departments. It was a real pleasure to have the City of Ventura administration and firefighters pass on their appreciation to me of how much they appreciated working with our county fire. And so, thank you very much.
Yes, and thank you Supervisor Michaels.
Yes, I guess the one thing I would say on Thanksgiving, we should give thanks to those firefighters and those firefighters' families. I'm sure we'll be giving thanks that, you know, they're off the fire lines and back home safe. So, I think all of the firefighters up and down the state have had a busy season, busy few weeks, and we hope and pray that we won't have any more wildfires this year, and everybody can get a rest and kind of start recovering. And the other comment that I have is I would ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list from the fourth district, and I would call out Sergeant John Miranda, who served in the Marines, and I'm sure if any of you saw the article in the paper, he was a Marines Marine, and one of the things that he did was to work to get play yard equipment for Camrio State Hospital when it was still a hospital, and he worked very hard at taking care of those children and working with those children. I know he was on the phone to me and probably all of us every year, asking for assistance, and the work that he did was wonderful, and he will be missed in the community, and all of the persons on this list are, in fact, veterans. Thank you.
Yes, and thank you. And I would offer, Chief Roper, I know you have an item on our agenda if you wish to speak at this time at all, but certainly, as you heard from the board members, deep appreciation to your outstanding team, the work that was done, all of the other public safety personnel who work with you from our EMS agency, certainly the Sheriff's Department, and everyone, those incredible response. I heard from folks, friends of mine outside of our county in Southern California, and saying, you have an outstanding fire department, to have that kind of response with the, obviously, the acreage that was burned and be able to not have loss of, certainly, structures and their life. So, outstanding work. We thank you. If I might, too, Supervisor Michaels, just comment on Sergeant John. He was just a delightful Marines Marine, in the sense of, as an advocate for children in the community. I first met him when the hospital, the old mental state hospital, Camrio State Hospital, was open, and he was very active with children then, and carried that over to the children's play yard effort and all the other good work he did. Amazing young, amazing man, yeah. Good heart, very good heart. I'd ask the board to adjourn in memory of folks on this list. Excuse me. And I'd like to report to the board, because I received it just this morning in the Finance Committee meeting, the Moody's Investors Service has sent us a letter saying that our, the Moody's Rating Committee has reviewed and revised the rating of our Ventura County nineteen ninety-eight Certificate of Participation, our COPS certificates to A1 from A2, and our two thousand and one series from A1 from A2, and our two thousand and three series from A1 to A2. So, it's the highest we have ever received from Moody's, very excellent ratings, and we are very pleased. I think there's been excellent work done by our financial team, and certainly the leadership of the CEO, and I think it's great news to have right before Thanksgiving. Have such great, healthy ratings. It's good for the taxpayers. And the last thing I'd like to ask, just mentioned, those of you who've had a chance to look at the paper, if you haven't, Food Share, it's that time of year when Food Share does a significant food drive, and article in the paper saying that they are short on turkeys, and I think also short on the other things that go with providing staples to families through the winter months.
Do they want some of us to volunteer?
Yeah, they do. They do. Sixty to seventy percent of the food at all of the agencies, the kitchens, the food banks in our county come from Food Share. So, when they talk about being short, you know, when they're looking for some more turkeys, I would ask those of us who are listening, and the county, family, and others, to think about, when you go to last-minute shopping, to throw another turkey in the bin, and if it's frozen and get it over to Food Share, it will be appreciated. All right, that takes care of our public comment. Then we will have some time here. We'll move to our regular agenda items. Twenty-eight has been pulled and continued, so that will not be heard, and I don't see Linda Schulman here to do our twenty-nine item. So, we will move over to item thirty, auditor controller receipt of information and approval of an annual review of accounts. All right.
Back to twenty-nine.
Okay. All right, I think if we can, we've got a good twenty minutes or so, let's do this mental health report from the grand work done by so many, many, many people in our community.
Good morning. Sorry for the late arrival.
That's okay.
I didn't realize the first item was pulled. Good morning, Linda Schulman, Director of Behavioral Health. This is Susan Kelly, and she has been the manager for our Prop sixty-three process, and by no means could I present this work plan to you without having her standing here by my side, because, really, the gratitude of the department to the stakeholders is definitely large, but the gratitude of the stakeholders and the department to Susan for her leadership in managing this is equally as large, so she should be standing by me. Probably she should be talking, but she didn't want to, so. As you know, Prop sixty-three passed. This work plan that we would like to submit to the state is the first of the allocations that the state will be funding to us. This is the largest allocation. It's the Community Services and Supports. It's actually where treatment expansion gets to occur, and our allocation from the county is six million, seven hundred, forty-two thousand and six hundred dollars. Got that number down lately, because we kept adding up to make sure we got to the penny on every line item. We didn't want to leave a dollar behind. We came before your board with a planning process that included bringing together all of our stakeholders and the Mental Health Board, and really finding out from the community what the needs were in order to determine how to spend this money. There is a list of over, I'd say, a hundred agencies in the department, in the county, throughout the community of people who participated in this. We had over twenty-five work groups meeting weekly, over two hundred people attending those work groups. This really was an effort on the community to come together and to say, here are the unmet needs for the mentally ill in Ventura County, and here's how we should provide the services. Of course, when they put all of their plans together and decided how to spend those services, they came up with twelve million dollars worth of really good ideas, and we said, we agree. And then, of course, had to sit down with them and say, but there's only six million, seven hundred dollars to spend. And so, what you have before you today is the effort upon everybody to figure out what the top priorities would be. And I wanted to share with you, in that sense, that the way that they went about looking at determining that was to look at acknowledging that everybody was underserved, really trying to prioritize who was unserved, and where there really weren't any services at all, rather than simply looking at who was underserved, and yes, more would be better. And so, out of that, the number-one priority that came out of all of our focus groups was the lack of crisis services here in the county. That's probably not a surprise to us, since we know that we've been going through a lot in dealing with the loss of that. And so, crisis became a priority. It actually represents almost forty percent of the total allocations between the crisis team expansion, the crisis residential center that will be proposed to be established, a children's crisis team that would include intensive home services, so that we really help the families avoid having to hospitalized their children, and then, in addition, crisis services for our older adults through the seniors program. So, the community said that was the number-one thing, and it certainly came out of the work groups as the number-one thing to provide funding for. In addition to that, the older adult population, our, what used to be renowned seniors program here in Ventura County was also affected by budget cuts, and we really had, no longer had, older adult services specialized to that population, and so, it was identified as one of the most unserved populations. And so, a re-establishment of our seniors outreach program, but I think a better model, an improved model, as more research into best practices for these clients was done by the work group to figure out the best way. It includes a lot of in-home services to get to those clients who would not otherwise be able to come to the clinics and get normal services. It is a county-wide program. There's an east and a west team for it, and we're excited about the proposal of that expansion of services. They also are looking at the needs of the mentally ill through the jails, and so, there's an effort to put a full-time licensed clinician in the jail seven days a week, so that we can really work to assess what those clients' needs are, get them linked and discharged into appropriate services in the community, instead of just discharged back out into homelessness. We're also very excited about some of the one-time funding. Because this program will only run, hopefully, March through June, if the state gets its three-month review plan done on time, we won't obviously spend the full six point seven million dollars in this year. And so, the state said, okay, you should still get all of that six point seven million, and so, you can ask for one-time funding to use up the rest of that funds. And the biggest dollar amount that we're requesting out of that one-time funding is two million dollars for housing. A million dollars of that, we have a letter of interest from Cabrillo Economic to look at putting together some permanent housing, rental subsidies for a project that they're working on, which is a really great, it's nice to put our clients in shelters and motels, but ultimately, we want to move them into permanent housing, so that they can really be strong members of the community. But the rest of the housing monies will help almost a hundred and forty or a hundred and fifty clients in housing. So, I could talk for about two hours and still not cover all of the great programs that are here. I know you've had a chance to read it. I wanted to highlight what I thought some of the real top areas were, and then see if your board has questions and move through this.
Other questions from the board at this time?
One, I hope that we're moving, you know, you mentioned discharged people who were in the jail. I hope that we're moving in the direction of treating the people who have mental illnesses and were arrested because of that, like schizophrenia. I hope that we're moving in the direction of treating them like we do the juveniles and juvenile court. That's a beautiful program.
Are there other questions or comments? Do I have any cards on this, Roberta?
I have comment, not question.
Okay. Hearing no questions or comments? Supervisor Bennett first?
Okay. Number one, I recognize Supervisor, went to the meeting where they were rolling this out, and recognize Supervisor Parks was there, and has put in a lot of time with this committee on this issue. I want to emphasize, nobody got everything they wanted with this. Everybody had some frustrations, and yet, it's pretty remarkable that we were able to get it down to a twelve-to-one vote with all of those compromises. So, I think you could look at this and say, oh, it's too bad, or you could look at this and say, wow, it's pretty darn incredible. And so, my compliments to everybody involved in putting in all that time. I think we have to ask ourselves, how do we get such dedicated people who volunteers, that spent all of this time working this out? My final point is, it is not easy to spend money well. It's really hard work to figure out how to spend money well. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. I'm just, I'm really appreciative, obviously, of the people that helped put this together. To me, this is exactly how government should be, you know, to be able to have funding available and to have stakeholders and incredible outreach throughout the county and different communities coming together and being able to bring that together for consensus. Supervisor Bennett pointed out, no one's perfectly happy, and that's just because we'd like to have some more funding, but we will, and we will be able to continue with these new programs, as well as do some enhancement on some of these, too, in the future. We've just got some incredible feedback, and I think the results of the plan are telling. We have a better outreach will be out there. I like the idea that we're going to get some more ombudsman. The crisis team will be back, and in addition, we'll have some special crisis team out there in the east county. I'd like to see, as we move on, to get a full twenty-four hour out in the east county, as well as the west county, but I understand west county can go to east county. But also, something very special in the terms that we now have, we'll have some residential locations for people in crisis, and I think that's really important, something that we haven't had before. And of course, having those one-time funds to help provide actual housing units is going to be spectacular. I also think that we're getting some really good assistance for our transitional youth in terms of that dual assistance with drugs and mental illness. And also, you know, just being able to get out to the Santa Clara Valley and begin programs there. And something else that's really key, too, particularly with such a big county, is getting some funds for transportation. Really happy with the results. I would like to make sure, and I will follow this next year, to see that we can get more funding towards crisis on the east county also, to make sure that we don't have to worry about long-distance commuting for our crisis team. I think the organizational structure is good. We will have, the groups that helped put this plan together will form into a monitoring group that will be able to review and evaluate how the program's going and tweak it as it goes through, and I think that's important, and I'd like to volunteer myself for that, or whoever the board supervisor member is who's on the Mental Health Board. I think it would be helpful to have in that committee to help do some bridging also. I also note that even, you know, the NAMI, our National Association of Mentally Ill, is that correct? You know, they were also saying they don't want to put all the money into just crisis. We need to also deal with working with people that are in the system and trying to get them out and as recovered as we can. So, I think it's a good distribution of funds. I also really like the fact that we are putting funding into helping those people transition out of jail, because whether we like it or not, that's where most of the mentally ill are in Ventura County now, in terms of institutionalized, they're in our jails. So, having that ability to help those people get out and not get back into jail, I would imagine they have a higher recidivism than normal people that are in jail. So, I think that's really important. Start working on healing. I think we're really fortunate that the people of the state of California chose to approve this one proposition, although the rest were refused, so that we can help this population that typically, throughout history, has always been underfunded, and it would be great to be able to see the results of this. And I'm looking forward to seeing those results, to seeing the evaluation of Monitoring Committee, looking at the actual results of this. And it's very positive, and I want to thank the Behavioral Health Department. Susan, obviously, was key and very much appreciated by everybody, and that's important, too, and we'll continue to have your services as we go through. So, just, I'm real happy with this, and like I said, the only thing that I'm looking at is to make sure that we will get more crisis intervention over on the east county. There's a lot of opportunities out there for partnering with other agencies. The Coalition to End Family Violence is also going to be putting together services out in the east county that we might be able to tie together, where they're going on drive-alongs with our Sheriff's Department. The Workforce Investment Board is looking at doing programs for employment opportunities for the mentally ill. So, there's a lot of hope out there, and I'm very excited about partnering, and also seeing how this money is actually going to turn into people whose lives are going to be saved essentially, and their quality of life improves. So, thank you.
Supervisor Long? Just one second. Supervisor Flynn popped in.
Right. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I think that you answered, I really made my question into a statement, and I saw your head going like this, for the record, going up and down, and not this way. So, I think that's-
So, I think that's good. Let me continue to use the metaphor of the vineyard. The people who work in mental health, the workers, the social workers, all of them, the nurses, all of you, are really working in that vineyard. You're doing the hard work in the vineyard. And everyone that I've ever met with in mental health and talked with, because it's always been a major issue for me, have been people that are really dedicated to helping other people. And it's really, the vineyard's hardest work that goes on is when you're trying to help people come about, come away from the terrible problems that they're having with schizophrenia, and bipolar, and depression, and the success of them being able to live in the community and take care of themselves. That's a major, major mark. I can remember one individual who was in Camarillo State Hospital, and it looked like he could never make it outside, and it was difficult, and that's why he was there, Camarillo State Hospital. But when the hospital closed down, he did come with his parents, and his parents provided him with a room of his own, and some assistance, and also assistance coming from the county. But he was able to make it there. And if you had talked with him, or met him prior to the closing of the hospital, you had said, "That isn't going to work," but it does work. And it works because of, in great part, because of the people that do the work. And the people that serve on the mental health board, they're, in my view, their whole life is dedicated to making this whole thing work, and I commend them for that.
Supervisor Michaels?
Yeah, there's already been a lot of kudos, and I will add mine. One of the things that I don't see here, I'm sure it's in here, but it's rather a large document, and don't panic, it's not a negative. It merely is that I don't see a mechanism for a report back to this board on an annual basis. And I believe that if there is going to be this monitoring committee, that it's critical that the board get a report once a year, and see what the progress is, how the dollars are being spent, and certainly, if we have suggestions and better ways to spend them if a program isn't successful. You know, the critical part to me of this, and everybody has said, you know, "It's not enough money." Well, no, it's not enough money, and it is difficult to spend it wisely. And so, I think that for the future of any of these programs, that spending it wisely is going to be the most important thing that the department, the mental health board, and this board does. And so, if it's in here, that's great. If it's not, I'd like to see it in here, and an, you know, absolutely an annual report back on the programs to this board, and quite frankly, to the public who's footing the bill.
It's a really good point. The updates of the work plan are required to the state annually, so there's an annual update to the work plan, and we will always need to bring that before your board, before we will be able to submit it to the state. So, it's not necessarily called out, because of course, the state hasn't issued the process for that yet. They're one step behind each of the next steps as they're moving through this arduous process. But our expectation is that, on an annual basis, we will do a full review of how the work plan is going, including the oversight and accountability for the programs. Did it get started? Did it meet its target goals? Is it reaching the number of clients it said it would? What's the cost per client is one of the things that is actually measured, so that there starts to become a statewide sense of how much does it cost to provide what appropriate level of service to our clients, so that we can maybe start looking at some ultimate models around that. We also, I didn't mention, the state went for a grant to actually study whether transformation through this process would be occurring. They contacted six counties to participate as one of the study counties for that. It's actually turned into eight now, because a couple of larger counties wanted in, but we were one of the counties that was selected by the state. And so, we're working with their accountability. It's a community collaborative learning grant that they've gotten. It'll be particularly measuring our project links program, in looking at whether we've really learned how to do outreach into the community, and how to engage a community into accessing services. But it will provide us technical assistance for oversight and measurement of all of our programs, so that we can measure it. And the other thing to note in that sense is that the state has issued the rules that say this allocation comes to the county for three years, and then, and again, all of the details are yet to come, it becomes a competitive allocation for counties in the sense of who's actually achieving good results. And so, the money that comes to us from Prop 63 doesn't just automatically keep coming. We actually have to demonstrate that we are providing good results, and that we are actually achieving the purpose, or at the end of the three years, when the competitive part of, "We're only going to fund the things that are working. We're only going to fund that which is transforming mental health in the state of California," we would then not end up with the same eligibility for that. So, I know, I take that very seriously. I know the rest of our stakeholders, and your board does as well, and we will be one of the counties that keeps on getting the money.
That brings up a good point. I'm absolutely positive we will. I think it's a great team, but, you know, as with all other sources of funding, if there is a chance that this funding might decline, you know, we need to be ever aware of how are we going to then cut back to meet the amount of revenue that's coming in, and not get the county general fund involved, unless it's absolutely necessary. But I think if we're showing the results, that we will do fine. I just, you know, there's a difference between sending a report to the state and doing a report back to the board, and that's my request. Thank you. And again, great job.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I would like to also say, it's been outstanding work. I see this as a planning document that's a living document, in the sense of having these structures in place for the oversight and accountability, and the monthly committee work that will continue to do that on the programs, to see if they're effective, and be able to measure them, and report out, will be valuable to us as we live with the document. And as Supervisor said, to be ready for that grant process, so that we are now, have raised expectations and great hope for the community, and that's wonderful, and good, and healthy, but in that, we also have an obligation, responsibility, to work hard and make sure, three years from now, we're still in a strong position. So, the other thing is to watch our backside, so the state doesn't supplant funds as they go through realignment process. I think to have 250 participants and 19 different planning work groups is outstanding. You now have, on the ground, in the community, good people who you need to, we need to continue to mobilize, and to work on the challenges. Housing is just a goal that this board has had for years. We've made some success steps in it. We need a lot more. The challenges will be tough, as the housing market is tough in this county, period. But for housing for the mentally ill brings in a lot of other challenges with it, and we need to mobilize these folks to help us to go into the communities, to talk to the leadership in the cities, and say, "We need housing, and we need it here, and we need your support for it." So, I really encourage all of those who participated. Everybody didn't get everything they wanted, as you said. There certainly was a request that just demonstrates, again, what the great passion and the hope is from the community for the population that has a great need and to be served. But what we have before us now is a wonderful framework to move forward from, and to build on, and to continue to test the success of it. As initiatives that are done statewide, that typically govern at the local level, they're not pure in form nor tested, and typically have unintended consequences. So, we still have to watch for that, and be diligent in testing the, testing our proposals and our programs, and making sure that we're doing the very best we can. I'm very pleased, of course, that the Santa Clara Valley is going to be able to get some on-the-ground support there, and as we heard this morning, I think that will rally additional supporters, and leverage, I hope, some additional funds as we move forward. So, I just, perfection is hard to achieve, but this has been wonderful, wonderful work, and I thank you, all of you from the mental health board who are here, and the advocates, and the many who aren't here. It's been outstanding work. Mr. Johnson would like to make a comment.
Certainly.
Go ahead, let's have a motion.
Move approval of the recommendation?
It's a motion and a second. Any objection?
Nope.
That's a no. Hearing no objection, hearing great congratulations to all, and good work.
Been trying to figure out how to do this.
Go forth and get this to the state. And Mr. Johnson has some comments.
I'd just like to add my appreciation, and to recognize Linda Schulman's work, not just for this program, but for all the other work that's been done. To take Supervisor Flynn's biblical reference of laboring in the vineyards, you have to do that in all kinds of weather, and the weather hasn't been too good. This is one of the bright spots where actually revenues or resources increasing. Dr. Durand has announced his retirement, and someone has referred to Dr. Durand's favorite quotation is, "No money, no mission." And so, obtaining this, and hanging on to the resources to deliver services is, in many ways, equally important to delivering the resource, or the services to the clients. And I think Linda Schulman's strength is her conscientious review of the finances, and trying to scrape together all the money that's available to try to help things locally. And I'm glad to see that, at least this time, when you come before us, you're not having to do with less money. In this case, it's a little more, it is difficult to spend it well, and all of the work between your office and the advisory board, the board of supervisors, and the volunteers in the community, is a remarkable achievement. Nothing's ever perfect, but as long as we keep talking to each other, and under your leadership, I think we've got a brighter future. So, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Susan, thank you so much.
Yeah, really, many kudos.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, those in the audience who haven't seen the documents that they've worked with, it's been incredible work. Just a huge document, a living document, so thank you. All right, board members, it is my pleasure, and we're going to, if we might, move ahead to our 9:30 time certain items, and the first item up, I am pleased to bring to you and invite to the podium, I don't see Rudy, oh yeah, right there, Rudy Gonzalez, Southern Cal Edison Community Affairs rep. And do we have Jean Rodriguez with us? Jean Rodriguez? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
There you are.
We're evil twins.
There you are. Supposed to be over there. These, all right, Rudy Gonzalez, Southern Cal Edison Community Affairs, and Jean Rodriguez, Director of Energy Efficiency for Southern Cal Edison Company. And they're here this morning because they have money to give us. But I'd like to, from the board letter, speak a moment as to what we have in front of us. As you're aware, this board, there was a lot of work done in 2002 that put together a regional energy authority, and the focus of that local authority was to really look at energy efficiency and sustainability. And the alliance, the Regional Energy Alliance, in 2003 was formed as a result of some work from the local government commission, and some grant dollars we went after, and we were able to pull together a good stakeholder group of private sector and public sector, and worked on a joint powers authority that now includes the county of Ventura, Oxnard, Thousand Oaks, the city of Ventura, and recently VRSD, and Santa Paula, and the community college district. So, our roundtable is getting rounder. And with that, we have had tremendous support from our partners, and they are partners on the ground level with us, from the state level, using the CPUC funds that have funded our utility partnerships, and again, to support our energy efficiencies at the local level. The funds have allowed us to reach out to public agencies and commercial residential utility customers to provide training and information, and the main focus has been on conserving, and conservation of energy resources, and looking at ways to retrofit, and to provide some good basic education, and information, and resources to, again, public and private agencies. So, working with our utility partners in replacement of lighting, motors, boilers, et cetera, and specifically, for our county, great success with the projects at the Government Center Hall of Administration, our Todd Road Jail, our Simi Valley Library. Gas-saving projections are underway, and will be provided at a future date. How the program works with the grant dollars is they are let out to the local, to the agencies who are looking at doing some energy conservation, and if they achieve the success of that conservation, they get an incentive dollar back. And that incentive dollar is what we're pleased to see today. The incentive's covered about 30% of the total cost that have been associated with these projects, and contributed to a savings of 903, 911 kilowatts annually, and with that also, approximately $96,000 annually. So, I have the pleasure of stepping down to receive this check on behalf of the board for the good work of the Regional Energy Alliance, and the on-the-ground gurus, our David Inger, and Cheryl Collard, and those who really moved some of these projects through, along with our business community, and the full cooperation of our partners. So, I'd like to step down, but I would invite you, please, to speak to the board again of good work we're doing together.
Thank you so much. I'm really pleased to take this opportunity just to speak for a minute. If I could have Cheryl join us, because in the spirit of partnership, you should be standing right beside us. Ladies and gentlemen of this board, I just want to tell you one thing. I know you have much business to do today, but let's take a minute to celebrate. And the celebration isn't just for this $160,000 check, which represents the incentive amounts. The celebration should be about more than just the money, more than just the incentives, more than just the over $100,000 a year that you, because of your leadership and the vision of this board, and the hard work and dedication of the alliance, are able to save each and every year by building buildings that are smarter than the standard. I would just encourage us to do one thing today, all of us to do one thing today, and that is to look up. And I mean that both literally and figuratively, because if you look up in this building, what you see in these reflective cans are fluorescent fixtures that are using only a third of the energy of a standard incandescent fixture. I can tell you, my friends, that I go to many, many places, many, many public facilities, where what you see up there are the cheaper-to-buy-it-first incandescent fixtures, but more costly, and less environmentally beneficial, in the long run, for the constituents that you all serve. So, that leadership should be applauded. And with that, I would love for us to present to Chairperson and Supervisor Long, this check for $162,000, the knowledge that this represents $100,000 a year for the useful life of everything that's been installed by David and Cheryl, and all the businesses and residents here, and our commitment from Southern California Edison and Southern California Gas Company, working side by side with the Public Utilities Commission, that this partnership will endure. I'm here to announce today that for the next three years, we're going to do more, we're going to do bigger, we're going to do better, and we will come back to you with larger checks and even greater success stories. So, thank you all for your leadership.
Thank you. That's true.
Just in time for the holidays.
Can we go shopping now?
I'll just take a moment and just express our gratitude toward Cheryl, for really, and to Supervisor Long, for getting the ball rolling on this. It's been quite a success story. It's been a win-win for all parties involved, and it's a pleasure working with such a dedicated group. Thank you.
I thank you, and that is great news. We have worked hard on this partnership, and it's wonderful, such a win-win for all of us, for our communities, for our services that we provide to the public, for the utility services, and for all of us in this county. So, it's been outstanding work. Thank you so much. And would you introduce the next item, please? Vice Chair, will you step out for a minute?
Madam Chair, just, as we're switching over to the next item, I think this is just a great recognition, and particularly, as we see energy costs rising rapidly here in this country and in the world, these investments in energy savings just make a lot of sense. I see our fire chief back in the back again, and every time we've built a fire station now, we've tried to push, to try to say, "Let's make them as energy efficient as possible." And so, I'd just like to throw that same challenge out to our CEO, and our staff, and Supervis- supervisors in the district, that Santa Paula Hospital may be a place where we could look for these same kinds of energy, and I hope there may be a partnership to help us with those kinds of costs. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's in the mix. Thank you.
We'll see that that check gets invested in more energy efficiency. The next item is Item 23, and that's Larry Matheny with a report on our investments.
I'm pleased to present the report of investments for the month of October, showing that through the careful investment of proceeds, the Treasury pool participants received an additional $3.3 million representing earnings off of taxpayer investments. I have asked the clerk to hand out page two of our list of investments. I don't know if the agenda package that was provided to me by my staff, just ironically, was the only one that missed page two, but just in case, you have that. I was going through the materials this morning, and I thought, golly, we're saying that we have some investments that are going all the way out to two years' maturity, but I only see something out to October of '06. Something's wrong here. One of the encouraging things, as we're in the midst of our heavy collection cycle, is that we're going to be placing more and more money into the Treasury at higher yields right now. So, that 3.18% rate that we were able to report to you today for the month of October should be sliding up a little bit, and we just look forward to having a nice, successful collection cycle here for you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Do you have any questions? Do you have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second.
Outstanding job, as always.
Seeing no objection.
Not bad.
Motion passes, and it's also nice to see each time you come, that percentage of yield keeps going up, as opposed to last year. And going on now to Item 24, our next 9:30 item, is our second hearing on the adoption of our in-home supportive services contract. And Mr. Nichols is here for that. Nicole.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, you have before you today the second reading of the approval of the contract with the in-home support services workers. As you know, we have been working since the early fall in completion of this agreement with the in-home support services workers. It increases their rates of pay from $8 an hour to $9 an hour for the first 17 months and to $9.50 an hour for the remaining 19 months of the contract. We have also provided for some joint labor management committees on training and on registry service. If you have any questions regarding the program or this contract, we would be happy to answer them.
You have any questions?
Are there any cards? Okay, move approval. Excellent work.
Thanks very much.
Excellent work.
With your permission, I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce Mr. Richard Shaw from HSA, who was a member of the negotiating team and the newly appointed Executive Director of the IHSS Authority for the county, Mr. Rob Jenkins.
All right. Welcome, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion and a second. Seeing no objection, the motion passes. It is a great job, and I know it was a lot of work, and we started off with a lot of demands and managed to come to consensus. I'm really happy to see that. Thanks.
Thanks very much.
Very good. Thank you. That completes our 9:30 time certain items. We have a 10 o'clock in front of us, and 11 and a 12, and we've gone through 29 and 30. Shall we do?
30.
Item 30.
Thank you. Chair Long, members of the board, this item concerns receipt of information and annual review by your board on accounts and funds containing developer fees as of June 30, 2005. Today, we're asking you to receive the information on attachments 1, 2, and 3 regarding County of Ventura developer fees, as required by various code sections there. And on December 6, you'll be asked to complete the annual review and find that the fees and purposes identified are reasonable. Your board's direction last week, eliminating widening of Santa Rosa Road from the County General Plan, is not incorporated in the attached reports, since the reports, this report is dated June 30, 2005. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Questions?
I have just a couple. It looks very familiar, this report, like what we've seen come back, I guess, last year about the same time. But there's a couple of things in it that I was seeing that's, I'm not so sure how up to date they are. In terms of attachment 1, we're talking about that we are still in negotiations on the three cities of Moor Park, Fort Winnimi, and Santa Paula regarding the, I guess that's the TIMF agreements. And I'm just wondering, it sure would be nice to get a real clear status on to what direction we're going on this. I think we were still in negotiations last year. And for example, I had heard that the city of Moor Park, like the council had approved it, but it hadn't, you know, the papers hadn't gotten to the county. So, it would be nice to get a better understanding about where we are in terms of the status of those contracts that may be that we will need to go back and revise now that we've done the general plan updates that changed some of the mitigation perhaps for the roads. So, if we can get a report back, I think that would be helpful on that item. Also, looking at page five of that same attachment, talks about, again, the money in Oak Park, $100,000. You need $3 million for it to build a substation, which is probably not accurate. I would imagine it costs more than that. But it talks about the earliest estimated construction date is '05-'06. I think that is pretty unrealistic, considering we have $100,000.
Actually, this information is received from various departments. I compiled a board letter. I already changed that date. It used to read '04-'05.
Oh, okay. But even '05-'06.
So, we're trying to contact the Sheriff's Department for an update on that, and any additional information, I'll make sure to bring back for the December 6.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I realize it's a compilation from the different departments. Another item was on that same page five, where we were talking about the construction of a substation down with the five-year funds. This is something else that I would like to be able to have some understanding on. We have some Quimby fees as a result of, I guess, Lake Sherwood development, and I just wanted to know how those funds will be, what are the guidelines for distributing those funds? And that, again, is something that's been around for many years, so just to see if we can get some of this moving and having the funds sitting there that could be utilized for parks or facilities for our public safety. I'd like to know what kind of availability that is. Thank you for that. There's no other questions.
Other questions?
I'll be glad to move this item.
So, motion and a second to receive this information to return for the annual review on December 6. Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you.
Item 31, ratification approval of revised service agreement.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, we're asking you to approve and ratify the revised attached service agreement effective July 1, 2005, between the Superior Courts and the Auditor Controller for Services rendered under the Trial Court Funding Act of 1997. These services have been provided continuously since 99-2000 fiscal year, and we've had some modifications now that the courts is pulling away and developing their own payroll system and removing funds from the county treasury and setting up their own accounting system through the state. And the transition discussions took a rather lengthy time to make sure that we have the safety net continued to provide payroll services until they actually have tested. And so, they're targeting now to move off of our payroll system for January 1. And the negotiations were a little difficult to try to figure out which services they needed to continue beyond that in order to make sure that they were covered with accounting services until they've fully transitioned. We're asking for your approval for this agreement.
Questions?
Move approval.
Motion and a second, and objection to the motion. Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 32, District Attorney, approval to accept supplemental funding.
Good morning, Chair Long. Board members, Mel Chambers, DA's office. This item before you is to request that you approve the supplemental funding from the school districts for truancy services for the current year for approximately $40,700 and to authorize the necessary budgetary transactions to incorporate that into the budget. I could answer any questions you might have on this at this time.
Other questions?
Move approval.
Motion and a second, and objection to the motion. Hearing none, so ordered. Item 33, approval of the contract for City of Thousand Oaks.
Yes, this is a contract that's been ongoing for several years. It provides a three-day-a-week attorney that resides in the City of Thousand Oaks to deal with community issues that impact the city. And it also extends the fixed-term agreement, or not fixed-term agreement, the fixed-term position that is working there. I could answer any questions you may have on this, if you have any.
Second.
Motion and a second.
I believe he's in the East Valley Sheriff's Station, District Attorney Assistant.
Any objection to the motion? Hearing none, so ordered. Item 34.
Yes, this is a pass-through grant from the City of Oxnard for gang violence suppression work, and it's a grant that historically was at one time fully funded, and over the years, the state OES has reduced that funding. So, this is, covers partial funding of Deputy District Attorney in the office there. I could answer any questions you might have on that at this time.
I don't hear questions. I hear a motion and a second. Any objection? Hearing none, so ordered. Item 34.
And this item is the other portion of the previous item, where the city has stepped up and is paying the additional cost of that position. So, this goes with the previous item, and it's for $86,000, and it goes through '08. So, they've stepped up for a three-year period on this.
Move approval.
Motion and a second, any objection? Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 36. Do you want to do the item 36 before 10 o'clock?
How about a break before 10 o'clock?
Do we have anyone here to speak to item 36?
She's right there.
Hello, Rebecca, I'm sorry. Okay, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnston. Rebecca Arnold, General Services Agency. The item before you today is a report back on rodenticide poison use at GSA-maintained facilities. In March, your board directed the General Services Agency and the Public Works Agency to initiate a policy of avoiding, to the extent possible, practice of using rodenticide poisons at county-maintained facilities. The information provided to you today is in response to that request. GSA staff does not use any rodenticide poisons at any county, GSA-maintained facilities, including county parks. Additionally, we identified 24 vendors and lessees who maintain county facilities. 83% reported back that they do not use rodenticide poisons. The remaining 17 have committed and did discontinue use as of October. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Just thank you for bringing this back, and again, this isn't just any rodenticide poisons, but the ones with the anticoagulants, because we're seeing them work their way up the food chain and kill off a lot of the wildlife out there in the mountains. So, I appreciate that. It's nice to know that those that were using it are now discontinuing it. I would hope that you'd come back to the board if you find that there is a problem with this new policy. But I think it's overall good for the environment, and hopefully, Water Street Protection District's also having success with it.
We will do that. The next step for your information would be to adopt policy language in our blanket purchase orders, and also, as the contracts come for renewal, it will be additional clause.
That would be great, then it could be established. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's a receiving file action.
I'll move that we receive a file and thank GSA for providing the report.
Motion and a second, hearing no objection. So ordered. And again, thank you for the report and the effort.
Why don't you finish the last one?
We're going to finish. Item 37, Public Works, Mr. Pratt, good morning.
Good morning, Chair Long.
And also 16 will follow this.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Chair Long, board members. Mr. Johnston, for the record, my name's Jeff Pratt, and with the Warragee Protection District. The next item on your agenda, you see every two weeks, it's a continual ask for your authority to use emergency purchasing procedures. New items as of this particular report include an additional project, you'll see in that letter, the Ventura River Groins. We've just gotten the money and the permits. We feel that it's necessary to proceed forthwith. It protects several houses on a essentially vertical slope just above the Santa Ana Bridge on the Ventura River. News report on the rock ripper absolute protection at the airport, it's just that the contractor continues to have trouble getting bonding. He was supposed to have his bond in last week, didn't get it. We've made several calls, they're not being returned by the bonding broker. Number of games being played here between, I think, probably the various contractors and this contractor and the bonding company. We're going to review our options with County Council this afternoon. That's all I have on this matter. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Other questions?
Second.
Motion and a second on item 37, hearing no objection. So ordered. Okay, now, item 16, sir. Would you give us a report out?
Yes, ma'am. I think I heard the question over the speakerphone, it was, had to do with why the increase in the amount to the contract for the Los Yahas cleanout. Recall that that contract was let just after the fires of 2000, the fires which occurred in 2003. We couldn't let it until 2004 because the thing had to drain, we had to survey it, and we had to put the amounts in the contract. That, there was about 150,000 yards at that first contract. Of course, it was burned, it got hit with the floods, the rains of January, February 2005. It doubled the amount of material that was in there. We reviewed the matter with FEMA based on all the emergency work that was going out. We were getting 20 bucks a yard, round numbers, to haul stuff off-site. The contractor agreed to hold his original 2004 prices, which was 11 bucks a yard, and we sought FEMA's approval and got it. They approved it, and we increased the contract amount to 4 million. I hope that answers the question.
We went out in 2005, knowing how much debris needed to be removed, and we estimated the amount to be a little over 2 million. What happened between that estimate, original price?
We went out in 2004, and we had 150,000.
It was 2004 that you went out for?
September, yes, ma'am.
I thought it was after the rains, I remember it coming back.
We did that as well. After the rains, it was 150,000 more. That's the 4 million, that's the additional 2 million dollars.
It was 150,000 more in terms of debris?
Correct.
Okay, so the reason why the original price was only 2 million, a little over 2 million, was because you were dealing with less debris at that time when you went out?
I'm sorry, I haven't been clear. There was a hundred, round numbers, 150,000 deposited after the fires, September 2004. After the floods, an additional 150,000 for a total of 300,000 yards.
Okay, and so, the original price here does not reflect the full amount of debris that was deposited after the fires and the floods?
The original amount being the 2 million?
Yes.
That reflects the amount deposited after the fires.
After the fires, but not after the?
That's correct.
The rains. Okay, so the reason why this has almost doubled is because the debris has almost doubled since the original price?
That's correct.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Ask a question. Did the contractor, Staven, have a sharp pencil?
He did. $11.80 a yard. He won that bid in 2004 against several other bidders, and he held those prices for us after the 2005 floods, which was kind of when others were taking advantage of us.
I'll go ahead and move the agenda item.
Motion and a second.
Thank you for the report.
Motion and a second to move item 16, hearing no objection. So ordered. Thank you for the reports.
You're welcome, thank you very much.
Continue the good work and keep me informed. All right, item 38, last item, Sheriff's Department, authorization to accept fiscal year buffer zone protection program grant award. There you are.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. CEO Johnny Johnson, Laura Hernandez, Assistant Director, Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services. And this morning, we are requesting your approval to accept a grant award in the amount of $97,000, which has been allocated to the county under the 2005 buffer zone protection program. This program was designed to increase the general protective capacity and preparedness of local law enforcement agencies and communities surrounding critical assets. And in this case, the federal government has identified two critical assets in our county to be the Thousand Oaks Mall and Pacific View Mall. This money will be used to purchase communications equipment, surveillance equipment, and radios that will go toward the Ventura County Sheriff's Department and Ventura Police Department for security around the two malls. The state is retaining 3% for administrative purchases, purposes. I think that these purchases overall will increase our capability to speak directly between the mall and our local law enforcement agencies, which we cannot do so right now. So, with your approval, we'd like to move forward with this grant.
Questions?
Question. Since the Simi Valley
Since the Simi Valley Town Center is new, was that capability built in?
I'm not aware of that. The selections were based on the square footage of both malls, I mean, a million square feet and over. We are resubmitting our list of locations within the county. It's possible it could be, it could be considered under the next year buffer zone.
Okay.
And I don't know really.
Well, my question was, since it was brand-new, perhaps in working with, with you all during the development process, they had already addressed that issue and we wouldn't have to do extra?
Sure. It's something I can certainly look into and get back to you on.
Thanks.
Just a comment that it was interesting as I read this, realizing what we're doing is, you know, a buffer zone protection program. I was thinking of things like certain defense companies that we have in the county and others that I would think that would be potential targets. But then when I got to the part where it was the shopping malls, it was a bit of a surprise. But I guess that's, you know, obviously in today's world, we're looking at terrorists and attacking civilians. But I would imagine there are also programs in place for the other more military-type targets that one would see.
There are, and unfortunately, we did not have a choice in the selection of these two sites. But again, they are high-populated sites where you have dense populations visiting. And so they are potential targets.
How was that determined? By sales tax or?
I cannot say.
Square footage.
Square footage.
Square footage.
Yeah.
Just wondering about Oxnard, I think it's number one now in sales tax.
Yeah, this was not our list of choices.
Well, see, I think Camrio Premium Outlet Center is number one, both in retail sales and, and I don't know that it's a million-square-footage one, but keep those in mind.
Definitely will.
Central to the county.
Move approval.
Motion and a second. Hearing no objection? So ordered. Correspondence, agenda, move.
Move, Stephen Powell.
I'll second. I just wanted to note that we did have a letter in there, someone from Vintage Marina who's upset about the forty-one percent increase in rent. And I just wanted to say, I'm looking for some comments back from our Harvard Department because I know that when we approved that lease, that they were given a stipulation in there about they had to delay any rent increases for a period of time and I just wanted to get that language. Thank you.
Motion received and filed. And a second there was? Any objection? Hearing none, so ordered. We will be back for the ten o'clock in about five minutes. If you want to set up, anything you need to set up, we'll be ready to go. We've been going all morning without a break.
Okay, I'd like to call the board. Back to the dais please. We'll start with our item. Okay, we're going to start with the item and that is our 10 o'clock time certain. And I'm pleased to invite, and I see it down front already, thank you, Rodney Fernandez, who's Executive Director of the Cabrillo Economic Development Corp., Zita Daniels, President of the Board of Directors, and Jill Fioravanti, who will direct the community building and neighborhood revitalization, presenting a report to us on the CEDC Housing at the Millennium, documenting new housing production and venture accounting. Good morning, Mr. Fernandez.
Good morning, Chairwoman Long, members of the board, and Mr. Johnson. It's my pleasure to be here this morning. I'd also like to introduce a couple of members of our staff who are here. Karen Flock, who you all know. We have a new member of our staff, Jennifer Koch, who's our new Communications Manager. She's also here. I want to just give you a preview of the presentation. I'm going to make some opening remarks. Our Board President is going to say a few things. And then Jill is going to present a summary of the study and then give you folks an opportunity to ask any questions or make any remarks. Again, Rodney Fernandez, Executive Director of the Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation. I'm really excited about this. You know, it's something that we've been looking to do for a long time and in our full plate of development and homeownership counseling and lately providing some education out in the community. As you would imagine, it's difficult for a small company to be able to do research. And it's something that I personally have been interested in and I never show you how much power I have, I can never get anybody to say, "Okay, I'll do it." But we had a very fortunate that Jill joined us a couple of years ago. She has a background in research and a love of this area. And we started this study about three years ago. We thought we could do it sooner, but you know how it is. But we're happy to be here and we think it's going to be something that will really help jurisdictions and community members understand this issue better and to be able to make better choices in the future. With that, I would like to introduce to you Zita Danielle. She's the President of our Board of Directors. She's been on the board for several years. And she's the Senior Deputy Director for the Fannie Mae Corporation.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having us here again. My name is Zita Danielle and I'm the President of the Cabrillo Economic Development Board of Directors. I'm also the Senior Deputy Director for the Fannie Mae Corporation. And I manage our relationships in the Southern California area. Thank you to Supervisor Kathy Long for putting this presentation on the agenda and to the entire Board of Supervisors for giving us an opportunity to speak with you today. I think the work that both Cabrillo do and the work that Fannie Mae does and the work that you strive to do for the residents of Ventura County fits well within the mission of Fannie Mae. And I wanted to tell you just a little bit about the work that we do. Part of my mission is to help families to achieve homeownership, of course, but it's secondly to help families to increase the supply of housing. That's both rental and for-sale housing. And it's for housing that are for residents that are underserved, minorities, families that are low and moderate income, but also for workforce housing families, which is where we see many of our challenges today. One of the other services that we have is to, we want to help families to succeed in homeownership. And I believe that Cabrillo here in Ventura County and adjacent areas has done a phenomenal job of fulfilling their mission and aligning that mission with that of Fannie Mae's. So, thank you very much for their time. For the last five years, CEDC and the Board of Directors have stepped up our work around affordable housing policy. We're looking, while we're looking specifically at the policies that affect Ventura County, we are looking at policies that may affect the entire state of California as well. This housing work included hosting annual housing conferences and involvement in municipal housing element studies and other activities to help preserve, educate, and improve housing and housing strategies for the communities. One of CDC's key strategy goals was to publish a housing study documenting the affordability and what was actually built in Ventura County compared to its affordability goals. This type of study represents an original research and is one of the first of its kind. I can tell you that via the database of documents that's available at Fannie Mae, I actually searched and I was only able to find a similar survey that took place in the Virginia area. So, I can tell you that the work that CEDC has done and the information that you're going to be provided with today in regards to the housing study and the needs for Ventura is frankly one of its kind. We hope that this study will raise awareness in the gaps of housing production over time, improve and help us to share, help us to make policy decisions on providing equitable mixed housing for Ventura County and its residents. I'd like to introduce Jill, who's actually going to present the study for you. As just a side comment, I can tell you that I had the pleasure of reading the study after it was completed. And I can tell you, it's not often that I receive a document that I actually find engaging and not something that causes me to go to sleep very quickly. This document, for example, I saw it as a positive instrument to talk about what we didn't do, what we can do, and how we set the direction on how we go. And with that, I give you Jill and thank you again for your time.
Thank you very much. Good morning. Morning Jill, thank you.
Good morning. How are you all doing?
Good.
Good. Thank you so much for your time this morning, especially to Chairperson Long and to the entire Board of Supervisors for your time. We're really proud to be launching this study. As you've heard from Rodney and Zita, it's been a long time coming. Several of the people who have been helping me with it, and their names are listed in the appendix of the report, there's more than 60 of them or 70, have been asking, "When is it coming out?" So, now we can say it's coming out and we feel that this is the exact right venue for us to be doing that, partially because it's a countywide housing study and also because of the really excellent work the unincorporated county has done in meeting its goals. And we really commend you for that. Just to give a little overview of what we'll be presenting, I'm going to talk a little bit about background and methodology. I'll try to be brief on that though. As a researcher, you know, I kind of get interested in that stuff. We're going to focus on the overall findings for the county as a whole and then talk a little bit about findings for the unincorporated county, which is where you're all geared toward, as well as your countywide focus. And then we'll be looking at some policy recommendations and Rodney will be coming back up to end that portion. And also, I do have copies available of this study. It looks like this, hopefully you all have it. And I do have more copies for anyone in the audience or any other people who are interested, they can get that from me. All right. Just a little background, the study was conducted by Cabrillo. We're a nonprofit affordable housing community development corporation. I would like to just take this time in addition to particularly thank Chuck Channon from the GIS Department and as well as Mark Suma and Kristi Madden in the County Executive Office for helping provide some access to resources so I could get the county data that you'll see today for the unincorporated county. We tried to answer two questions with the report. One is what housing did each Ventura County jurisdiction develop during the period of 1990 through 2000, so an 11-year period, compared to the goal set through the Regional Housing Needs Assessment? And also, what strategies have Ventura County jurisdictions used to help increase the supply of affordable housing? So, both looking at things objectively, what's been done, what hasn't been done versus what maybe some goals were, and also what are some good ideas out there that other groups can emulate or other jurisdictions? This slide, some of this is just background, which I think you all are aware of, that California Housing Element Law mandates that each jurisdiction adequately plan to meet the housing needs of all economic segments of their community. And that's defined in four areas, very low income, low income, moderate income, and upper income. And those annual determinations are set through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for different counties or areas throughout the entire country. And on page five of the report, you can see what those income level breakoffs were for each year of the study. The amount of new housing needed for each of those four categories is determined through the Regional Housing Needs Assessment process, which is set through the Southern California Association of Governments in this area, or SCAG, in collaboration with jurisdictions. Typically, those are five-year periods, though they traditionally have been extended because of variety of reasons. The two studies, cycles that apply to this study are the 1988 through 1995, which then got kicked to 1997 cycle, and the 1998 through 2005 cycle, which essentially what we did is annualized the goals and created an 11-year period to match the decade based on those two cycles. Each municipality is required to report on how they're doing in meeting targets, their RENA targets. Even though this is something that's required, each jurisdiction is supposed to set, submit an annual report to the state listing their progress. It's actually very rarely done. And when I actually asked the state, which I started with, you know, "Can you send me all of your annual reports?", I think I got about 10% of what was supposed to be submitted. And again, I want to commend the county here. Your staff within a half an hour found every single one of those 11-year reports. So, it's something that you all have done a very good job with and I can't say the same for everyone. There's not a lot of accountability at the state level to ensure that these goals are met. There's a moratorium on building permits or lawsuits, but that's kind of really the thing that's out there. And then potentially being out of compliance with your housing element, though, is kind of a different thing. So, really, there's not a lot of carrots or sticks that are associated with meeting these RENA targets. And there's also no systematic way to measure progress towards meeting targets. Given that these reports aren't submitted, we don't really know what's been built. And if we don't have a baseline, it's hard to kind of know where we want to go. So, that's something that really was an impetus for starting this study. This is an 11-year timeframe and we work closely with city and county staff. We really tried to use existing data, if at all possible, given that it was likely written at the time the housing was finished, as opposed to trying to make people look back 11 years or 15 years and figure out what was done. So, we tried to be as time-sensitive as we could. And we also submitted requests to housing staff and mayors and city council people to attend a focus group that we had. We had three different focus groups so they could talk about what best practices are out there in the development of affordable housing. Okay, now to the fun part, the findings. There's some really key findings that were interesting in doing this work. One is that, now, these are findings for Ventura County as a whole, so all 11 jurisdictions. The county met 91% of its overall housing production goal from 1990 through 2000. So, if you look at all income levels and all income levels and summarize them altogether for RENA versus what was done, the county actually built 91% of what it was supposed to. The unincorporated county exceeded its overall development goal by 29%. So, actually, a significant amount of housing was built in the unincorporated county and that was kind of balanced with other jurisdictions that didn't build as much. But that's something that you all should know. Housing production affordable to very low and low-income families, however, fell far short of meeting RENA targets. And housing production for moderate and upper-income families met or exceeded the goal. And in particular, upper-income housing exceeded the target by about 28%. And that became more exaggerated in the latter part of the decade. So, like I mentioned, housing production increased overall in the late 1990s from 1998 through 2000 with that heavier focus on the upper incomes compared to the previous cycle. And jurisdictions range in their success at meeting affordable housing needs. The appendix of the report lists each city's or jurisdiction's progress towards meeting the RENA goals annually and over the 11-year period. So, that's something you can see in the appendix of the report. I'll focus on just the unincorporated county for this particular presentation. So, in short, the problem isn't the supply, it's really what's the mix, it's what's being built within the total rather than the total. So, these findings are just a graphical way to kind of document what I was saying. Overall, across the whole county, if you add up all of the four income groups, there were supposed to be 31,222 units built over the two cycles and there were 28,466. So, that's the 91%. You can see that in 1998 through 2000, which is the maroon color, the purple color, more was built than what was technically allocated if you annualized the RENA cycle over that timeframe. So, the production increased in the latter part of the decade. This is another way to show the same thing but more in a chart. So, the very low and low-income units were at 36.2% and 38.0% of the goal respectively. Moderate and upper-income units exceeded it. So, the pendulum is really swinging towards the moderate and upper. One thing to note is that some of the units that were built in the early part of the decade were affordable, not because of restrictions put on them, but because of the income that, because of the recession and because of just the sales price at the time happened to be affordable to a low-income or even a very low-income family. I think we all would agree that's very unlikely to happen now. So, it doesn't mean that this stock is necessarily still out there as affordable. It very well could be that now that could be resold at a moderate or upper-income level and is no longer restricted or never was restricted for that particular income group. This is the same thing, essentially showing visually, the, in each of the four sets of pairs, the latter one is the gold, the RENA goal, and the one to the right of it is the actual. So, you know, really, the very low and low income is falling far short. The moderate and upper are exceeding their targets. And specifically, I want to give a couple of slides on the unincorporated counties, which is something that's unique to this presentation. The unincorporated county met 92% of its very low-income target and 95% of its low-income target. This is really exceptional. It's something you all should be very proud of, given the timeframe. I mean, like I would say, the one caveat with that is it's not necessary that all of those are still considered very low or low-income, but at the time, they were, or maybe still are, depending if they have restrictions on them. The county exceeded its modern income target by 251%. So, there's a lot of development that was built that was modern income and exceeded its upper-income target by only 3%. So, it's really pretty close. A lot of development took place in 1990, the year 1990. And then there was less units built in 91 through 93 and then less throughout the rest of the decade. The one thing that we don't know is exactly what developments those represent. The current way that the county, the unincorporated county reports its numbers, it's just the final number, not the developments that go into the calculation of that number. So, we don't exactly know what developments that represents. It's more narrative and it doesn't really go development by development, which is something as a recommendation that county may want to consider in amending the way it does its reports. And this is visually, again, you can see, you know, the very low and low-income targets were very close to being met. Moderate was way off the charts and upper was a little bit over the average. And overall, this tells us that, you know, building did take place. The county, again, this is, now we're going back to the county as a whole, met 91% of its benchmarks. However, what was built was really skewed toward moderate and upper-income housing at the expense of very low and low income. And we recommend that the county and all the jurisdictions in the county think about how this trend can be reversed. Just some ideas, some policy recommendations regarding data collection is to really improve data gathering across all 11 jurisdictions and to be more consistent about the way data is gathered. Some jurisdictions had no record of what they had produced and a lot of it was institutional memory. Other cities documented each development, if it was single or multifamily, what income level, even financing sources for the affordable ones. So, that's something that we're, to have a consistent method of data collection can be really powerful and can really show us where we've been and also where we want to go. There's also some excellent best practices that are included in the report, including involvement of residents in neighborhood design, planned development overlays, mixed-use developments, and others that I would encourage you to look at. And finally, we suggest that the county as a whole, look at bringing together shared knowledge. One of the things that was most powerful is the focus groups that were done as part of this study. I think as a result, I may be wrong on this, but I think it created the impetus for the housing staffs of all the jurisdictions to now get together on a quarterly or monthly basis, I think it's a quarterly basis, to just share knowledge. And that may be something, it's still going on now, I'm actually going to be presenting to them in a couple of weeks. And that may be something that the planning, the planning staff could do as well, or planning commissioners could do as well. So, it's just an idea for really cross-sharing of knowledge that I think could be really powerful. Before I turn it over to Rodney to close out, I can answer any questions or if you'd like, he can finish up and then I can answer questions at the end.
Other questions at this time?
I just have one.
Sure.
Your data, if you look at 1990 to 2000, right? And the biggest number of, largest number of residences or homes went in the first part of 1990. And the rest slid off.
For the unincorporated county?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a lot of development in 1990 and then it kind of...
So, in a way, it's kind of misleading.
Well, it's accurate for...
Unless you understand that point.
It was, it's accurate for what was done, but I wanted to just bring it to your attention because it was something that was unusual.
Right, yeah.
And there isn't a list of the developments that that 1990 number represents. If there was, I could tell you more in detail what that was, but we don't know that, so... Yeah. Any other questions now or otherwise I can...
I would just, I have one question.
Sure.
It is really interesting seeing it by city, by city, by city, and what their goals were and how far off the mark many of them were. Just looking at my city, Thousand Oaks, that they, they had a lot more estimated for very low, low, and moderate and came in with just upper, for the most part, income houses. But my question is, is there also kind of a reflection of the level of income in these communities? And it would be interesting to see how well their housing matches their income levels because I would think you'd have greater disparity in those areas where you have more low-income people and less low-income housing, obviously. So, I don't know if you did any kind of analysis on that too?
Yeah, we, not really, because the way, the way that the RENA numbers work is there's a number that's set for each jurisdiction and part of that number incorporates different demographic and economic factors. So, each, it's not like there's one number that's for all of the county. Each jurisdiction has its own number. So, we kind of compared it, we tried to compare apples to apples as much as, we assume that the number that was set for that jurisdiction was an accurate reflection of what that jurisdiction needed or should be providing. If that answers your question.
So, you're saying that the RENA numbers in some way somewhat represent the income levels of the community or actually what's missing in the community is probably more of that?
Supervisor, if I may?
Yeah.
Since I live this down at SCAG on a daily basis, the RENA numbers are built around numbers that are provided by every jurisdiction and they do include a demographic study. So, that, so that when the numbers for how many do you need that are low, very low, moderate, are logical numbers. And so, that's how they're developed. And then SCAG takes those numbers from the communities and from our county for the unincorporated area and how many units are expected. And then they're just, that's the number that you're assigned and it's all based on information provided by the city, both demographics and stock.
And other, and there's other things too, I think they look at. There's a lot of, yeah. There's a lot of factors, but that's a very good overview of what happens. Any other questions that I can ask, answer now?
No.
Okay, I can turn it over to Rodney to close out.
Thank you. Sure.
Okay, just in closing on this, I think the logical question is, well, not only how can we do better, but how can we do more? As you've heard, the study indicates it's not a supply problem, it's a mixed problem and it's a targeting mixed problem. So, let me just share with you a couple of suggestions that might be looked at in the future. First of all, the obvious one is make a deliberate effort to target very low and low as you do developments. And this is a no-brainer, but the truth of the matter is, that's not what's going on. You know, there's, I won't mention any names, but there's a large city on 101 that just approved 2,000 units. Forty-four units in that 2,000 master plan are affordable. Another community recently approved about 800 in a master plan, zero affordable. I'm happy to say, as a member of Santa Paula, there's a healthy dialogue going on and it looks like the number of affordable is going to be right around 13 and maybe up as high as 20. So, I think that as the crisis has deepened, people in the community particularly are getting it. I think quite frankly, the elected officials need to kind of move up. And I think part of that is the communication and the dialogue and the education that's beginning to take place at each community so that elected officials feel more comfortable in making those decisions, but also if there's opposition, there's maybe people who support the concept in the same room with them. And that's, by the way, that's what we found out in Santa Paula, the majority of people in the room were people who support a mix. So, the second point is financing. We need more financing sources, particularly at the local level. And the key mechanism that we would recommend that you look at is a trust fund. A trust fund is a way to aggregate money so that it can be allocated as developments take place. As you know, you know, it's not just saying, "Okay, we're going to do this," then you have to figure out how to finance it. By the way, Santa Barbara last year approved a trust fund and Los Angeles approved one a couple of years ago. The third point is reduce the development timeframe. We really feel that there needs to be some really good work done on this. It takes five years at a minimum to move from site acquisition to people moving in. And on the other hand, we've had experiences where it's been done in two to three. So, one of the things that I think that might come out of this is that maybe the planning staff and maybe planning commissioners and housing staff can kind of get together periodically and figure out what can be done to kind of shorten this timeframe. It's really a very serious problem. Fourth point is looking at how you can mix affordable housing and economic development together. And I think you are already looking at linkage fees and whether or not that's an appropriate Education, education, education. We're happy to say that we've joined forces with the Home Group and Vasita to move along this front. And I should say, it's because our Board of Directors said five years ago, this is important, that we have taken a role to do this. And we can see now that there is more education going on at the local level where people in the community are educating themselves about what can be done. Another point is inclusionary housing. I know you recently turned this down, but I think the point is you have to have all the tools at your disposal. And we're hoping to update this study, but I think everybody knows in this room that the problem's only gotten worse. And so, having inclusionary gives you the opportunity to be more proactive. If it's properly constructed, we feel it's something that this board should look at. Another point is improve oversight on what has been restricted. I think you may recall in the last couple of years, periodically you see news articles that come up about homes that turn over that had restrictions that all of a sudden are lost because somebody didn't monitor it properly. And we're thinking that maybe in our next study, we should pay attention to that and be able to tell people exactly how many homes are in this category by jurisdiction as maybe a way to help them monitor their own restrictions. And the final point is bringing the education and the elected officials together. We really feel that where the community is better educated and there's greater dialogue taking place, that it then provides the elected officials the comfort, if you will, to make better decisions. So, we've seen this in Santa Paula. I want to tell you a quick story about CME. We were in CME on a project a couple of years ago where the planning commission, it was the first time I've ever seen this in my career. The planning commission took time to educate the naysayers in the, in the room very politely, but it was well-done, done with a lot of respect. And what happened is that when the project went from the planning commission to the city council, there were about 50 people who were in the planning commission opposing it. When it went to the city council, there was two or three. So, I think that education, particularly at your level, at the planning commission, really can go a long way. So, with that, I'd like to close this up and thank you very, very much for participating in the study and for giving us an opportunity to share this. We're going to take this on the road and in the next six weeks, we hope to be able to do similar presentations in all jurisdictions. And I'd like to just end by, again, thanking the county staff and the funders who helped support this. They're listed on the front of the document. Thank you very much for your attention.
And we thank you. Questions, comments? Supervisor, then.
I just have a comment, Rodney, and thank you for doing this study. It's really, provides a lot of information. And information is powerful if it can be used in the way that you just described. used in the way that you just described, if people really say, yeah, look at it. Look at what we didn't do, or what we did do, and why did we do all those things, or why didn't we do some of those things. Something that would help, in, in addition to this fine study here, because it's very educational, it'd be, it's going to be powerful, would be if we could have some kind of a period like from 1980 to 2005, and take certain parts of the county where, that are mostly affected, and, and have some graphs running up and down, and they're going to go up, they're not going down. And that would be the numbers of people, or the numbers of garages that are used for housing.
Overcrowding?
Yeah, overcrowding. Well, garages. Use that, don't be ashamed to use garages.
Okay.
It's there. And it's parking, more than just automobiles, it's parking people there with families. And that, that bar would be low in 1980 in Oxnard, and it would be high today. I can just see it now. The other one is the, is what you just mentioned, overcrowding. If, if they're not, if people aren't living in garages, where are they living? Whose income is down? They're moving in together, two or three families. That is not a healthy situation. If we could have those kinds of numbers, you'd almost have to walk certain areas to get them, and, and the difficulty of that is that people don't want to identify their garage as something that's been converted, you know? So, it's a difficult process. But we can really imagine, I think, and kind of predict where those bar graphs would be. Thank you, Rodney. By the way, let me express my congratulations to the way your company has evolved. I can remember Rodney standing right there, and kind of in a, if you don't mind, Rodney, kind of in a begging way. Begging for money, but you, you certainly have evolved, and I know, I know a lot of your people, and they have too. You're a first-class company. You've stuck with it. You never turned away. Mr. Murdock talked about success at the dedication out on Lewis Road, and, and you're, you're one of those examples, really, that he, he talked about. You've never given up. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the nice comments.
Supervisor Michaels?
Yeah, just a, a couple of comments. I think the report is fascinating, and I think it's something that probably a lot of people didn't want to have articulated, because with the state's insistence through the RENA process that we provide housing at all economic levels, it's, this points out that we've provided housing, but not at all economic levels. And I know in the community of SMI, there are those who would like to dispel the belief that there are low-income persons living in SMI, and that there is overcrowding, and that there are several families in a single home. But not long ago, we, there were people killed in a fire in a house that was converted, and there was, there were not proper exits. And those people didn't have to die, but they did. In the neighborhood that I live in, there are very large, old Larwin homes, built in the mid-'60s. And I can tell you, in my neighborhood alone, that when I walk in the, you know, in the mornings, there are easily identifiable homes that have three, sometimes four young families living in the same home. Otherwise, they can't afford it. Now, that's the bad, the negative side, maybe, but to the positive side, clear back when I was still on the city council, and we had, you know, the housing subcommittee, we insisted that a percentage of the new development would be affordable, as high as 25%, and that it had to be indistinguishable from market rate. And it worked. Now, I've not been there, you know, in a long time to get all of the numbers of what's happened and how many of those have converted over the years from affordable to market rate, but I know there was a concerted effort to do that, and that was the way to do it. Because then when people moved, you know, the whole neighborhood kind of moved in together, there wasn't a way to distinguish which of those units was affordable. But it provided affordable housing without the argument that, you know, well, slums. And that's the one you hear most, is, you know, we're going to create slums, and, and there's going to be noise and traffic and drugs and, and crime and all of that. And it does not, for the most part, happen in those kinds of housing projects. But even at that, if you look at these numbers, some of the cities are falling way behind in what's affordable, and I think part of that is the resistance to apartments for the young, you know, entry-level worker. And most of the neighbors in single-family neighborhoods don't want apartments. Yeah, they don't even want condos. And so, I don't know how collectively we get over this issue. The other one is mixed juice. Perfect way to provide housing for low, very low, and entry-level. You know, you're young professionals that don't want a huge home, don't want a yard and a pool and all that stuff to deal with, but there is this resistance that has built up in this county over the last 20 years to anything but single-family detached. And I know at one time, SMI's general plan was 80% single-family detached, 20% multifamily in their general plan. So, I hope that together we can change those attitudes, and it truly is nothing more than an attitude. It's the attitude of the electeds, and it's the attitudes of the communities that, you know, they don't want those people to move into their neighborhood, and they have no idea who those people are. They've never articulated it. So, this is a great report. I didn't mean to go on so long, but I get really frustrated with some of this after all these years, and I hope that we can continue through the housing summits and that to, to truly deal with the issue and not just give it lip service like I've just given it too much.
Supervisor Bennett? I'll try to do this very quickly, just try to hit the major points. One, the issue, a lot of times people talk about SOAR, and we've always said SOAR is not about how fast you grow, SOAR is about where you grow. I think what your report really demonstrates is not how many houses we build, it's what the mix in, in terms of the housing. That's why I think your comments about the inclusionary housing hit the nail right on the head. Bottom line is, we need inclusionary housing. Every time we build, we have to say we've got a problem at one end, we don't have a problem at the other end, we've got to force this inclusionary housing. Unfortunately, the Building Industry Association is the biggest opponent to inclusionary housing. They came and lobbied this board when we had inclusionary housing in front of this board. I was the only person that voted for it at that point in time, but I'm really frustrated that the Building Industry Association is always taking that position. The other major points is that you're absolutely right, and I want to emphasize the issue about the restricted housing. I've seen it too often, where you build the housing, you know, affordable, in particular, affordable is the one that gets played with the most, and you build it, and then it doesn't stay in that affordable category. There's nobody out there monitoring. It's one of the things I think is really important, is that we really, really build that monitoring into anything that we build to try to make sure this stuff stays in that, in that proper category. I really appreciate the fact you're going to go on the road. Wish you good luck as you go out there, because it is in the cities where we really have to get this message. I mean, the cities are going to be the generators of most of the housing in this county by, as a result of our guidelines for orderly development, et cetera. They really have to embrace this issue of the mix. And the Ojai Valley has some unique issues in the Ojai Valley, and I wanted to make you aware that I have started a stakeholder process in the Ojai Valley to try to talk to various stakeholders, to try to get to, with the goal of trying to build support for the proper kind of housing for the needy people in the Ojai Valley. And I think that those are the major points. Thank you.
Supervisor Parks?
Do you want to address his?
No.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make two comments. One is in regards to the issue that you brought up, that we, when we, when municipalities provide affordable housing, that it's usually on a timeframe for 20 years, or for 30 or 40. Being able to have those units in perpetuity, I think, is a way to solve a lot of these problems that we have later on down the line, when all of a sudden they convert to market rate. I don't know what, if there are state laws that need to be addressed in order to be able to provide that kind of thing, but right now, it is a big issue, I think, because we're seeing some of these end, and then we don't, no longer have those units available for affordability. And then also, just in regards to what Supervisor Bennett was saying, too, I think it is really beneficial information for the cities to see. I would love the papers to show those bar graphs for each of the cities, so everyone understands where their city is in providing what is, been established, what they need to provide. So, thank you very much. It is very informative.
Okay, just a quick feedback on the, on the restrictions. The, the standard these days in California for apartments that are affordable is 55 years. And the standard for homes, if it includes redevelopment, financing support, can also be as long as that. So, again, it goes back to what kind of financing you're using to make these things happen. There is provisions already in state law to keep them, but your comments are well-taken. There are other kinds of financing that don't bring those restrictions, and that's, I think, where the policymakers need to look at.
And sometimes it's not even related to the financing, but rather the, you know, the city council or whatever, it says, okay, as long as you put aside this money for 15 years, or 10 to 15 years, and that's what's happening, too. So, having them be a little bit stronger and saying for the life of the project is going to help a lot in the future.
Well, thank you very much once again, and just want to ask you to continue your leadership. You're, you're a big part of why I think this, this issue is getting some legs, and I want to thank you for everything you've done.
And I'd like to thank you, too. I appreciate the good work. You've been very active with the Home Group that I, too, have been working on, and I think the forums that have taken place have started that community dialogue. Home's focus has been doing a couple of the things that you have in this report, and that is to get to the communities, to the neighborhood councils, to do that public education, that density isn't a four-letter word, and we need to all look at how we can house the variety of folks in our community who need housing. And I, I think that work needs to continue on. This gives you a great tool to, and thank you for the work on it. It gives you a great tool to take out to the cities and the neighborhood councils, so that they can see that, you know, we've fallen down here on the, on the diversity and the mix that's needed to house everyone in our county. I think that we have, no question, the challenges in front of us and some good ideas presented here. You know, Lynn Jacobs, one of our very own, just moved up to be the president of the BIA, and, and her mission is to build alliances, and I would hope that, and I know she will. She certainly understands challenges for affordable housing and the diversity, so that we can call on her to help with this message. I, I applaud that you're willing to take this out to all the cities. I think that we all know projects that are going on in our cities right now, that the councils have backed down from density because of the public pressure. And it really is, does take the public education and engagement and appreciation for what is a, a mix in their community of, of needs, and also an aging population that needs to also be put in this mix and addressed. I thank you. I hope that the next report isn't Housing Our Millionaires, and we can move forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good report. Thank you. Okay, board members, pardon me. Oh, we have a receiving file action on this. And that doesn't mean put on a shelf and forget. We're all going to use this tool. We thank you for the tool. Motion of the second, objection, hearing none, so ordered. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you for being here. Okay, board members, we've got a couple of minutes here to stretch, and then we're going to have our 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock time certain from our chief. A study session. Okay, board members, we all had a chance to stretch. All right, we're going to start with our 11 o'clock time certain study session to review and adopt. This is going to be a review and adopt strategic initiatives for '06 to '11, goodness. Chief, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Johnson, Bob Roper, Fire Chief, Ventura County Fire Protection District. I'm here before you today to review the strategic initiatives that the fire district wishes to get your conceptual approval on today. These conceptual initiatives will cover us between this next year, 2006 through 2011. I try to do this every five years to keep your board informed of what we're working on besides the day-to-day things, so that we can return back to your board with specific policy items. Upon your board's approval of these conceptual items today, I'll be returning back to the CEO's office and giving him timeframes, specific fiscal impacts and so forth, along with the action times I'll be doing. Let me go into the strategic initiatives. The first one is to develop a more assertive fire prevention life safety program centering on residential fire sprinklers, wildland fire management, and community education. Let me start with the fire sprinkler program. Currently, we have fire sprinkler ordinance your board has adopted, and the cities have too, where we have fire sprinklers in businesses and residences under certain provisions. What we are looking at going toward is a basic, what we call a zero square footage sprinkler ordinance in residential for all new. For any new house to be constructed, no matter its size, or how far it is away from a fire station, we'd be looking at putting residential fire sprinklers in. This is primarily due to the advent of the, smoke detectors have worked excellent, has saved numerous lives, but the smoke detectors, it takes while for the products of combustion to alert somebody. And also, we have the ongoing thing that people don't always replace their batteries, and some people cook food and the smoke detector goes off, so they take it down off the ceiling and disable it. Those fire sprinklers in a house are not easily disabled, and it's something really to assure that you have a sentry there protecting the family of the residents. So, with that, we're also, we're looking at for fire safety, and we're also looking at it from an operational point of view, is as our cities are getting their, they're nearing their completion of what I'll call "build-out," is more and more of all that new construction's going on the outside of the cities. As that happens, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to build a new fire station on the outskirts of a city. We should keep it centered in our population growth areas. So, if we can have those newer residences on the outside with fire sprinklers, we may not have to build a new fire station in those areas. The inner parts of the cities may have more population density and issues associated with that, so what we may have to do is put additional resources to the inner city. So, the fire sprinklers work not only for fire safety, but also for operational effectiveness. The fire district also created a model weed abatement program that your board adopted in the late '70s. This was highlighted during the Governor's Blue Ribbon Commission report, and is really seen as a model which your board talked about this morning, even in the recent fire in Ventura City. We cannot keep a fire engine at every house, and the weed abatement program alone is the one thing that has the biggest advantage to the homeowner. We can't make an older home that has wood siding, take it off and put new stucco on. But by having the, abating the fuel hazards around really works well. The 100-foot is a model. The state finally woke up after the Blue Ribbon Commission hearing and recognized that and adopted legislation this last year, so now the 100-foot is recognized throughout the state. But we have certain areas, and Bell Canyon is one of those, that we have asked for voluntary compliance with a 200-foot. And that is due to the type of fuels and the slope, the angle of the slope and what our projections are. If a fire starts at the bottom of the hill, the length of the flames reaching the top of the hill normally where the home is. So, what we'd like to do is return back to your board with an amendment to our current ordinance with a formula that we can back up based on flame lengths that we can take and recommend and require that people have not only the 100-foot, but additional footage. It may be another 100, it may only be 50, but it'll be additional clearance based on a case-by-case basis. It wouldn't be everybody in the district that receives a weed abatement notice. The other portion of this is we really need to work with our open space managers. After the 2003 fire siege, I personally met with each of the open space managers that have public space within Ventura County. And we're asking them to form a partnership with us that we too want to provide recreational areas for the public to use. But as that fuel doesn't burn every year, it just gets older, it gets bigger. And as you saw in Ventura City, is we had grass about two to three inches tall on the hill, green grass, but what was burning was the old decant, decant fuel loads that were up on the hill. Somehow, there needs to be a method, either mechanical, grazing, burning it, something has to be done to manage those fuel beds, and that's what I want to work on. Our third component of this initiative is also our community education. Right now, due to budget constraints and our internal priorities, we wait for the public to come to us to do a lot of our community education. And really, what I want to do is reach out into the communities with programs that meets their needs, and try to provide those on a better basis to reach out to a larger community. The second initiative is to develop an operational staffing plan that meets the technical and training mandates of our specialized services that we do.
Chief, we have a question here. Supervisor Michael, sorry.
Can we go back to the fuel issue first? I think it's easier to kind of ask questions as we go. And you and I've had this conversation, but one of the issues for the urban wildland interface is not only the clearance, but what people landscape with right up near the structure, and the types of things they store near the structure. And I guess under this community outreach is where I'm thinking of this, and I would hope that as part of this initiative, the department would come up with a, an education program, even, you know, perhaps we make a requirement when homes are built in certain areas that, you know, certainly, we can't make them never put in something they shouldn't, but at least a strong advisory, you know, warning, 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 you live in a high-fire hazard area, and this is out, the district's recommendation of what you do and don't plant, what you do and don't store near your home, near the actual structure. So, before you left that, I just wanted to throw my two cents and say that I hope the department will be working on that kind of a piece, because, you know, even with the 100-foot, we had some instances where, you know, some of those things like the cypress trees go up like a, you know, a Roman candle in a heartbeat. So, if you would add that piece as you're working on the initiative, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions after the first initiative? I'll stop after each one, just.
I would just say that the people in Bell Canyon in there, we had a large meeting after the fires, were even saying, you know, this 200-foot buffer needs to be your law. They're in favor of it too. And I've actually heard some in Oak Park talk also, do we have sufficient buffers? I think people are realizing how important they are.
Okay. And just to give your board a report, as I mentioned, the Blue Ribbon Commission, which Supervisor Michael sat on on his rep, is the Blue Ribbon Commission now, the recommendations, over 50% of the recommendations that were formulated have been completed. The tougher portion of the 50% now are going to take some large dollar numbers and also some federal changes, law changes that deal with the national issues. But the Blue Ribbon Commission report has been instrumental in getting a lot of changes done for the future. And there is a state legislative oversight board now that is authorized that watches over this. It has been taken from, the Blue Ribbon Commission was probably a body of about 30 members, and now it's the state oversight, I'll call it, board is about 10 to 12 people, made up of state assembly and senate members. So. Number two is develop an operational staffing plan that meets the technical and training mandates of various specialized emergency services. What we intend to do here is we're trying to, we have taken on many additional duties over time, from when the fire district was formed, it was only for structural firefighting in 1928. It wasn't for car fires, vegetation fires, emergency medical service, vehicle accidents, or anything else. Over time, as we have adopted different skillsets to handle the growing public needs, sometimes what we're doing now is asking a firefighter to be a jack-of-all-trades, and we're looking at, that is beginning to be a physical impossibility to meet the federal and state training mandates. Pardon me. So, it's my responsibility to try to accomplish that mission still, but in a different mechanism. So, we are preparing internally, and I'll be returning back to your board with some ideas on how we're going to accomplish those skillsets within our existing operating budget. On number three, design a capital improvement plan with corresponding financial resources. We had this kind of glitch as far as we, the fire district went into a structural deficit. We're recovering from that. Our operating budget today is looking good, and what we're intend to do is we have deferred many capital improvement projects. We will be returning back to the CEO's office with our plan, and with that plan, we'll be working with a finance program, then hopefully after the first of this year, returning back to your board with a capital improvement plan and how we're going to finance that, and how we would serve the debt service on that. Number four, continue to pursue a regional approach to the delivery of emergency services, emergency management, training, and communications. Your board stepped out and supported our effort to bring Ventura City into our dispatch center, along with that now Ventura, Santa Paula, Fillmore, and now the ambulance companies into the dispatch center. What we really have is a model of a regional service for communications, which now, when the public calls, they get a better level of service, less trade-off of people in between, and a more coordinated approach. We have a rare opportunity unforeseen within the Ventura County as far as all the fire chiefs and fire departments get along very well together. We have a great working relationship, so we are always working on ventures together. But the one last thing what we're trying to do is to really try to go to a closest resource concept, where we would drop jurisdictional lines, and really, if one agency is closer, let them take the call, and for the betterment of the public. So, we're working on that, and that is something that we're still going toward. Number five, create a new program that incorporates an employee's health and wellness into the workers' compensation arena. Currently, the fire district spends about $5 to $6 million on workers' comp, the backfill of firefighters, and so forth. When the firefighter goes off duty, we have constant staffing mandates that we go by. So, I have to hire back an injured firefighter, somebody to fill in behind them on time and a half overtime. That's where my costs start compiling, besides the medical costs and so forth. What we're doing now is working with the CEO's office and risk management to try to work with a third-party provider, and trying to get an employee when they're injured, trying to get them treated, rehabbed, and returned to work as soon as possible. Number one, it makes the employee a better person, it lowers our operating cost, and we can become much more efficient. But this is a big program for us to work into, because as good efforts as we all may have at face value, there's a lot of legal issues that we have to dodge between to achieve this goal. Number six. Yes?
Have you considered, I don't even know how to describe this program, but like a wellness program and requirement, that's probably a bad word, but for the firefighters to maintain a certain health level and strength level, et cetera? Because a lot of injuries sometimes are from people who have gotten somewhat out of condition from when they were in the fire academy, and/or just the normal living, stress, strain, whatever. And I know that a lot of companies and the military have gone to a kind of a health training requirement. Can we do that? Are you thinking about that, or are you focusing strictly on, once they're injured, how to get them back to work?
It's actually a comprehensive program of combining what you've suggested, along with the actual treatment. The International Association of Firefighters nationally developed a firefighters' wellness initiative about six years ago. We are taking some of the tenets of that program, examining those of what we can really do here, and we are really looking at what you're proposing there as part of one whole phase of this initiative. And so, we are looking at probably in the next couple of months, having a draft report back to me that's been developed between labor and management, that we'll be discussing back with your board.
In the newer facilities, do you have weight rooms and maybe running areas, designed routes? I see firefighters out running all the time near the stations, so I know some of them do, but is there a weight room, a fitness room in the stations?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Our biggest.
Now, how do we make them use it?
Yeah. The newer facilities all have that room designed within it. The older facility, sometimes those facilities are out in the engine room, but they all have the capability of that. But you're right, it's an attitude and a philosophy we're trying to adopt. Number six is establish a succession planning process at all levels of the organization. Just speaking of my management staff alone, in five years, 60% of my managers and myself are eligible for retirement. My goal is in five years, when that point reaches, is that your board will not be left in alert of fire management. What I'd like to do is make sure that the organization is left in good hands, and that it's in better hands than when, say, when I took it over, and not by accident, by a plan. And so, this goes along with even your board's adoption of succession planning. And finally, number seven is enhance the community emergency response team, or the CERT program throughout the entire fire district, and I like to say, not only the fire district, but through the county. Currently, the CERT teams here in the county, we do the training of those along with other agencies, and, but it's pretty isolated. There's just spotty groups of the CERT teams. And our problem is, is when an earthquake, or a fire, or a large disaster happens, we need the CERT team participation throughout the entire county and not just in little pockets. The CERT program has been instrumental in neighbor helping neighbor, because there aren't enough emergency responders for fire law, public safety, and health to take care of everybody. But it's somebody who knows somebody's disabled down the street, who can go down and check on the wellness of that person to make sure they're okay. And if that person's having a problem, they can go up on the roof and fix a leak or something like that. But it's neighbor helping neighbor. But what we need is to have a good program, it has to be county-wide. And so, I'm going to do is, my goal is to start district-wide, which includes six of the cities, and then through the county fire troops association, have the other fire department takes the lead also, so we can say it's throughout the county. Like I said, as this program gets developed, I will be bringing more initiatives back to your board as far as for policy direction.
I have a question on the CERT, it's sort of related to the CERT program, but you mentioned, you know, knowing that your neighbor is, or someone who lives in the neighborhood is disabled or whatever. Do we have a way of identifying, I know HIPAA laws and all of this other stuff. Do we have a way of identifying, I know HIPAA laws and all of this other stuff would be a huge barrier, but it seems to me that after the hurricanes and some of the other disasters, one of the issues is knowing who is disabled and housebound, and, you know, how do we identify how to get to them? Now, a CERT team is a great thing, but if they don't happen to know that somebody is housebound, you know, it's not going to do any good. And so, you know, I've been trying to figure a way, and my office is kind of working on this, and we've spoken, and that is, how can we voluntarily, through the senior centers and however else, get the word out for people to voluntarily, you know, give their name and their address and their disability? You know, I'm bedridden, I have to be on oxygen, whatever. That would, quite frankly, prevent them from leaving the house like everyone else during an evacuation or during an emergency. And I think that fits here in your CERT program somewhere, and it probably would be a separate effort, but in conjunction with this type of county-wide training. So, you know, I just think it's critical to know, within the laws and privacy, where these people are, and with this aging population, and some of us are getting older every day, there's going to be more and more of this need to find out who is immobile. So it might be something for you all to think about in this initiative, and I know we're thinking about it as well in our office. I just don't have an answer yet.
Okay. I've written that down, and we'll be in further discussions on how to achieve that, too.
Mr. Johnson?
I'd like to commend the chief for putting number seven on his list. This possibly is the most significant of all of the initiatives. One of the things that we hear referred to commonly as first responders, your neighbors will probably say, well, the first responders are the fire and the sheriff. And what the chief is saying, and what the reality is, is we are all first responders, and when you have situations, earthquakes, flood damage, such as in the Ojai Valley where people are isolated, the fire district, or the fire stations are uniquely positioned just because of their normal work, to be those centers and contact points when you're cut off from other, you know, other help. And getting people to start thinking in those terms, and in answer to your question, Supervisor Michaels, we can't necessarily, through our records, you know, disclose, because of HIPAA, where people are that are invalids, but if we have a system set up where people who voluntarily should choose to register, that would go a long way and would avoid those kinds of privacy issues, because all of us as individuals have the right to disclose whatever we choose about ourselves. But it's, yeah, and there's no perfect way to do it, but I think it starts with awareness. And when people are, you know, I have a cartoon that I probably should blow up and hang in the office, where, you remember the old cartoon strip called Eek and Meek? These two characters that are walking usually through the desert or someplace, and they come to the edge of a cliff where someone is hanging on by their fingertips, and Eek looks to Meek and says, you know, "That's terrible, someone ought to do something about that," and walked off. And I think that in our, in society, one of the things is, everybody thinks somebody's going to do it for them, and they need to be reminded, and then there needs to be a mechanism by which we can kind of cooperate and do these things, because people do very well once the situation is underway, but they do even better if there's been preparation, you know, for that communication and a place to go. So I think that this is something that the fire district could really be a major leader in.
Supervisor Park?
We really saw a good response in Oak Park. We have a very active CERT team there, and how they really appreciated being able to help, too. Everybody should probably get CPR, you know, you never know when you're going to have an opportunity to use it. And something like being able to get yourself trained in that is almost equivalent to becoming a CERT member, in terms of you're out there to do something for someone else. And I think being able to get in those programs as easily as possible, get trained, is helpful to the individual, but obviously it's wonderful in a time of an emergency. And I also am really glad that you have this on here, and almost, it almost is like the Neighborhood Watch programs, only I think CERT has the added dimension of being able to actually affect people and help people in an emergency situation. It's a real community, a real community benefit, but it also brings community together. I'm looking at putting one, getting another one implemented out in Ventu Park, but really in all the large sections in our unincorporated area where we can do that, that's good. But like you said, having it in the cities is also really important, too. So it's nice to see the city stepping up to the plate, which I'm starting to see, too.
Other comments? One of the programs they have, models they have in Leisure Village in Camarillo, when you move in, you immediately are contacted by a block captain, and they provide you a form that you fill out and identify what your medical conditions may be, and they keep, the block captain keeps that, and then you also keep a copy of it with, you know, medication issues in your refrigerator. And they, on a monthly basis, check on the residents. Now, it's easier to do that, they have a confined and isolated, defined community, but certainly a model that we ought to be able to work with some of our nonprofits who serve the disabled and, you know, the medically special needs, and help to identify some of these folks in the voluntary program.
The difficulty is that, you know, special needs and those people that are in the system somehow are already identified, and there's somebody who knows the issue. But in just the general population, you have people who, you know, just aren't normally identified, they're, you know, they have their own medical insurance and may not have family members around, they get back and forth to the doctor, but there's no way for the greater community to know what their needs are. So we're missing a huge part of the population, and the biggest detractor that I've found in the last few weeks in, you know, trying to work through this in a very limited way is HIPAA, because it's all going to have to be volunteer. And I've talked to some of the physicians in the community to ask if they would, you know, just preliminary, if this were available, would you post something in your office for people to see, and would you consider receiving the information if somebody came on a monthly basis and got that from you, or, you know, a weekly basis or whatever? And some of the physicians I talked to said they would be more than happy to do that, and some I talked to were reluctant, because it's just extra work for their front office staff. So, you know, all you can do is try, but I think if the chief can make that part of his initiative as well, maybe we can get a little farther with the countywide, because it's, you know, it's a lot of people like you and me that maybe, you know, broke a leg, or all of a sudden, you know, we can afford to take care of ourselves, but we have a medical need that nobody knows anything about.
Let me just make one comment to Chief Roper. Unlike all the fire chiefs who preceded you, your predecessors, you always have a vision, and you come to the board with a vision, and it's like Pierre Duran, you have to constantly reinvent what you're doing, and so I want to commend you for that.
Thank you.
Wrap-up?
The only thing I wanted to say, you know, is, the department is working well now. We've got a lot of great employees who really make this work. I just happened to be there as the orchestra leader, and I believe that we've gotten a lot of really good things done in the last ten years, and I think the next five years are probably going to be quiet changes. A lot of these are going to be quiet, they're not going to be like the paramedic program and some of the other things. But I think, like the CEO has said, I think the CERT program will probably be, probably the biggest quiet change that we can implement, because we can prepare whenever, like the flooding situations, we staff up additional equipment and put them up, and like in the Ojai Valley, Piru, and so forth. But it's the earthquake, the unannounced things that we don't have time to plan and staff up, where a CERT program has to be done. So that's probably going to be the highlight of our strategic initiative for the next five years. I would also like to just thank your board for some of the public accolades that you gave us this morning for the fire in Ventura City. But I would also like to say, not to discount what the firefighters did, but I can go down a list of agencies that really don't get on the front page. I'd like to just take a second just to let you know, the Red Cross set up two shelters, one in Oakview, one at Sacred Heart Church in Ventura. The law enforcement, Ventura Police Department has not really been under a large-scale incident like this, and they took over the law enforcement branch to deal with traffic control and evacuations, and they did an excellent job. They had officers and their volunteers blocking off every street up in the foothills. Kathy Jenks and Animal Control responded to deal with the numerous horse issues. Also, we had Out of School Canyon, we had cattle coming down the canyon going out on Ventura Avenue that they were taking care of. We also contacted the County Cattlemen's Association to have them go in and help a couple of the ranchers in there. We had Rex Laird and the Ag Bureau also assisted. There was a lot of avocado, commercial agricultural ventures going on up there. Southern California Addison has a main transmission line that runs from Ventura up over the hill that feeds Ojai. During the fire, smoke does collect on the lines and actually ground faults from across insulators from the lines down to the pole and can short out the lines. Besides the danger of falling on the firefighters, that's the only power transmission going in the Ojai Valley. A lot of people forget that the heritage of Ventura City and Ventura County dealt with the oil, that's why it's on the county sale. And in that oil, Southern California Gas has many high-pressure oil lines running through School Canyon, back out to their major transmission facility on Ventura Avenue. There are their, the county EOC and all their staff, the city EOC, the fairgrounds, who your board approved are pre-planned staging area there that we implemented. I can't tell you if anybody was supposed to be there this weekend, as far as flea markets or gun shows or anything, but we had the complete fairgrounds itself. The school districts, Ventura School District in particular, that had to make some last-minute decisions to hold school or not. And then the last one is what we call the aftermath of the fire, is the Water Protection District now is going to have their hands full with the Public Works Department in Ventura City to figure out where that water's going from the county area back through the city, back out to the ocean. So together, it's really, truly, much more than the fire district, although the newspaper likes taking those pictures, and that's where the story, it's many more people that really make this work. So with that, I close my presentation.
Well said, well said. Thank you. Any other comments? The action before us is, we review and adopt strategic initiatives.
Move the recommended action.
Motion and a second. And the objection?
Good leadership.
Good job.
Excellent.
And I also, I also look forward to getting more medic engines in our fire stations. I know it wasn't one of your strategic initiatives, but that is something that we're slowly working on, too. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, chief. Good work. All right, board members, we have a closed session, and we have lunch, and there will not be an announcement coming out of closed session? That's correct. I wish everyone who's been with us today and listening, a wonderful Thanksgiving. May we all have a safe, healthy, happy holiday, and be in appreciation and thanks for our wonderful freedoms. Thank you. And remember food chair.